First order of business is preliminary actions. We are going to have a non-public session at the end of the meeting, not at the beginning. So we've changed that. Preliminary actions, items, superintendent nominations?
Yes, this evening I'd like to place a nomination for a gentleman by the name of Corey Parker to be the athletic director at Oyster River High School.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Corey Parker as the Oyster River High School Athletic Director for 210 days at a salary of $65,000.
A second. Any discussion, disposition, excuse me, yes Jim?
Will there be, will he have any other duties or responsibilities?
At the present time, he will be assuming the job description that previous person had.
Okay, so just, all right, thank you.
Yes, Anne.
Will this be a one-year contract?
They're all that way now, yes.
Okay. I know, I'm very impressed with his, with his resume and everything that I read and I thought this was a very quick and, impressed with how quickly the search went, so kudos to the search committee on this. I noticed that he's not an educator, that his background is in fundraising and in field development, and that that would be a plus, but my hope is that he will also have a very student-centered approach and to our athletics program, and I really support this.
Yes, yes.
Actually Corey has significant experience working in schools in the Cincinnati area. He's worked at the high school that he's currently AD of, is a school almost the same size as ours, 36 programs, we have 46 programs, 46 teams running, so his experience is very much in schools. In fact, one of the things I think that impressed the committee when we asked him questions relating to the role of an athletic director and balancing athletic excellence with academic excellence, because obviously that's something that's very near and dear to the Oyster River way of doing things, and he was very much in line with how we feel that, you know, obviously academics are very important and the AD's job would be to kind of help facilitate that and help, you know, use athletics as a way to kind of motivate kids and keep them connected, so, very much, in fact, he also indicated a real strong desire to get his masters in education now that he's, would be in the Durham area, so.
Great. Any other questions, will you have Mr. Allen up here?
I do. Todd, in New Hampshire, we have the redesigned high school, which we've adopted with our, some of our programming, and when we follow the child more specifically, the role of AD with children coming in and looking for credit for programs that they're doing outside the school, many of them being athletic, could you speak to perhaps how he might be involved in that process?
Specifically, I mean, that has, had not traditionally been the role that our AD has fulfilled. We do have a department head in the Physical Education Department, that certainly they've coordinated that, and as it turns out, our department head in our Physical Education Department is Don Maynard, who is the gentleman who served in the AD position up until now. We did not have that conversation with him up to this point, but certainly, I absolutely agree with you, we need to be looking at extended learning opportunities and connecting kids with all kinds of ways to earn credit, and certainly any role that the AD can play, whether it be through facilitating athletic endeavors or connecting them with other community resources, absolutely, we want him to have that role.
Thank you. Any other statements? All those in favor of appointment? Okay, next to nomination?
I'd also like to place your consideration, the volunteer coaches for the fall at Oyster River High School enlisted in the sheet, put into you.
Yes, Anne?
I'd like to make a motion to elect, elect the volunteer coaches to a one-year term at Oyster River High School, for the fall term. Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Anne?
I should have said with great appreciation, any volunteer who puts their time in is certainly greatly appreciated.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of electing the nominations? Unanimous?
And I'd also like to place for school board appointment, the SRO officer at Oyster River High School, and the truant officer, sorry, the SRO officer for the middle school and the high school, and the truant officers for Masway and Morehammett Schools for the school year.
Nomination?
I'll make a motion to approve the SRO and truancy office for Oyster River Crowbridge School District.
Second. All right, Megan? Any discussion? Yes, Anne?
Is it required by law that schools have a truant officer?
Correct.
I was reading the policy that we just did in December, and it said truant officer or superintendent and/or his designee, so it was unclear to me, but I wasn't sure what the law stated, so, thank you.
Any other, any discussion? Yes, Jim?
Just to comment on one thing, I've read the duties and functions of the school resource officer, and while I think it's a very good thing to have a school resource officer, the way it's structured is that they're under the complete control and supervision of the Durham Police Department, yet the school district is paying them according to what the chief of police dictates their salary and benefits to be, is that correct?
It is contractual issue, yes. That is normally the process.
Okay, I just, I was just thinking that we, that the district should have more of an involvement in terms of definition of duties.
Technically, they're an employee of the police department, that's why, so this is similar to other districts that have been in.
The wording of, the description of the duties did refer to the principle defining what those responsibilities would be.
Correct.
Okay. Yes?
They're still a full-time employee, the Durham Police Department, so in the summer, when they're not here, they're working for the time of dawn, so.
So we only pay part of the salary, which is the salary during the school year, and that's on a prorated basis?
Yes.
The chief picks an individual that can meet the requirements of the school, and so he's kind of cognizant of making sure that he gets the right person for the job.
Any other questions or?
Any statements?
All those in favor of the nomination? unanimous? Moving on, any announcements by the district?
Jerry Shaw, principal of Oyster River Middle School, just a couple of quick notes, you know, I want to remark on what a great start we've had to the school year, we're always fortunate, we have great kids that come to school ready to learn, it's also quite remarkable, the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes from our teachers in terms of getting ready for the school year. A couple of quick things, every staff member was trained in CPR prior to the start of school to make sure our entire school community is safe, and just the nuts and bolts of making sure the kids know where they need to go on the first day of school. Last, another thing is, all our summer projects were completed, I was able to move into the new administrative suite, it was just a Friday before the teacher workshop day, but it all worked out, and our tutoring space for our students, that's all been completed as well, so we're ready to go, and of note also is our third floor bathroom renovations, they look great, those are completed, the kids didn't get to use it the first day, we had a couple of hitches, but this past Wednesday, I mean, sorry, Thursday, the kids were able to use the bathrooms for the first time, so that's great. Also, our, get to show off OMS on September 20th, that's when our school-wide open house will be, that will be from 6:30 until 8 o'clock. Our sports teams have started up this week, over the next couple of weeks, we'll also be announcing a variety of different extracurricular clubs for our students, currently we have over about 200 students participating in our sports programs, and cross-country alone, we have about 100 students that are involved in grades five through eight, so that's quite the undertaking for our cross-country coaches, and this is the last announcement, our Power School training, that that parent portal should be up over the next couple of weeks, so parents will be able to start logging into that, so we look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Allen, principal of the high school, I would like to echo what Jay said, school had got off to a great start, I've told everybody who I've run into over the last few days just how amazed I have been over the 26 years I've worked in this district, how quickly our kids get back to business, by 9 o'clock on the first day of school, it was just, everything was moving smoothly, so that was great. You know, what Jay said about Power School, yes, that, we, there have been a few more glitches with that than we would have liked, we will however be mailing out by the end of this week, new parent portal information, usernames and passwords, and we're told that everything will be up and running next week, so you should be able to start accessing those. Handful of events going on at the high school over the next few weeks, parents, the first meeting of the PTO is Monday night at 7 o'clock in the high school library, the special guest is me, so if that's a draw. Additionally, on, for parents of seniors looking to kind of get the process started, we have College 101 for seniors, that's Tuesday, September 20th at 6:30, and at a location to be announced here in the high school, it'll probably be in the library, but I don't have that confirmed yet, but basically it's a program run by the guidance department to answer early questions parents have as they start, you know, going through the application process for college and so forth. Our open house at the high school is scheduled for Thursday, September 22nd, 6:30 to 8:30, parents get a chance to kind of go through a day in the life of their kid, follow the schedule, you know, and kind of see what things are like. In addition, our guidance department will be available to problem solve anybody who's having issues with Power School, so if you're having access issues, they'll be there to kind of walk you through and help you get that set up. And just on a sports note, Friday's a busy day here for athletics, so if you're looking for some sports entertainment, our girls JV and varsity soccer playing St. Thomas here, our girls JV and varsity field hockey are playing Bedford, and our girls volleyball team, and our JV and varsity are both playing here as well, all Friday afternoon, lots of fun to be had. And although we haven't, some of the other clubs and stuff haven't gotten started yet, I did, our community service club did meet today for the first time, and they've got some great ideas going, so there's, they're already getting their fifth grade mentor program up and running, and in addition to that, our yearbook group is doing a great job getting things going, I did send out an email to parents via Alert Now, just to let senior parents know about the senior portraits, and Cody, help me out, what's the date of the senior portraits?
October 4th.
October 4th, so check your email, you should have received that, but it gives you the details on that, and we encourage people to take advantage of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Gallo, principal of Masway, a few dates to tell you about, well first of all, we had an excellent opening, it's been a lot of fun, no hiccups at all, so we're feeling pretty lucky and very prepared. Some dates, this Friday, the 9th, we have our Masway Welcome Back picnic and ice cream social in the back of the school, and that starts at 5:30 to 7 o'clock, and then Thursday night of next week, the 15th, from 5 to 7, we have our curriculum night where I'll be sending out a schedule through the Alert Now system to our families about an exact schedule that they'll follow, with some playtime in there too, for some wandering throughout the school, where they can go to presentations from their, their child's grade level, in terms of all of the grade level teachers presenting their information about the grade level, common content and skills, and opportunities and field trips and those things you can expect from the grade level, and then we'll, they'll move on to talk to the individual classroom teachers and a lot of other essential staff that offer programs for the students, and snacks too, we won't forget that. And then on Tuesday, the 20th, we have our first PTO meeting at 9:30 in the morning in the Masway Commons, and Henry, I'll expect to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, the board, any announcements from the board tonight? Yes, Krista?
I'm sure that Lee will mention it himself, but I just want to extend our invite from me, from the board, I'm sure, to attend the superintendent's public forums, which will be occurring on 13th, 14th, 22nd, and 27th of this month, so please come out, talk to Lee, meet him, and spend a year about what you like and don't like about Oyster River Crowbridge School District. And then I also want to plug a non-district event that's occurring on Saturday, is the infamous Lee Country Fair, which will also be the last Lee Country Fair, so come on out as a community and support the Lee Country Fair, and have fun, it's a great event.
Yes, Anne?
We are invited by the town of Durham, I believe, to a write-to-know law presentation on Monday, October 31st, from 7 to 9, Jenny Berry sent that along, so I'm not sure if it's open to public, but I think it's a public invitation.
Anything else? Yes, Jim?
This is a non-district announcement, it's for the Durham Public Library on September 13th at 7:00 PM, there's going to be a presentation by Carol Glover, and it's called Casseroles Aren't Enough, I thought it was a cookbook, but what it is, is helping families facing crisis, and it's in conjunction with a book that she's written called Loving Hannah, Childhood Cancer Treatment From The Other Side Of The Bed. I had a very nice chat with the woman, and I'm going to try and make it, it's some wonderful ideas for all of us to help people who are having some problems like this, having crises in their lives, and at a time when, you know, everybody shows up at your doorstep with a casserole or something like that, there's other things we can do to help, and I think it's a worthwhile thing, and that's on the 13th at 7:00 PM at the Durham Public Library.
Yes, Anne?
No one's here from Mahaermit, so I'll announce that their first PTO meeting is on Tuesday, the 13th, at 6:45 in the West Wing.
Okay. Correspondence for tonight, Anne?
Hi, we have a few things here, we have somebody who wrote in, sent a link about a Massachusetts-based solar panel company that went bankrupt, a person wrote in to say that a certain petition remarked without a signature, I think this is referring to the tweet petition, that this person commented on at the last board meeting is now missing, and this calls into question the validity of the entire petition. An individual forwarded an article related to a municipality that was forming a social media policy for their town employees, for the board to look at. Somebody else wrote in, she was troubled by regarding comments made by a school board member at an August board meeting regarding the resignation of three school board members, feels that some of these resignations were mischaracterized. Another person wrote, "The public comment section of board meetings is meant to allow the public to comment to the board, not have the public make comments to members of the public, it is the job of the chair to keep proper order." We had a write-to-know request, somebody sent up to the board a short video that she saw during a training at UNH about holding people accountable for what they say. An individual wrote in saying they don't know what the big deal is, why doesn't the board just say the Pledge of Allegiance? He thinks this is a non-issue and it is very distracting to the board. Another individual wrote in to say, "What does saying the Pledge of Allegiance have to do with school board business? This seems like a patriotic litmus test, a better idea would be for the board to say our mission statement before meetings." Somebody else said, sent in a link to an article about surveying students one year into college and thought that would be helpful for us to read. An individual sent a very extensive report he wrote called ORCSD By The Numbers, and then sadly, we've received a resignation from an advisory budget committee member. And these are just brief synopses of letters we've received, if people want to read the full letters, they are public and they are available at the SAU office.
Okay, any accommodations? First, I want to accommodate all the teachers that spent many, many hours getting ready for the school year, and I guess we heard tonight that the school year is off to a great start, and it's all contributed to their hard work and them getting ready for school, and I know with the, I have a granddaughter that entered the first grade, and I feel very, very good about her, but inside of that, the teacher went out of her way and introduced the kids prior to the opening of school, I thought that was great. That's it, go ahead.
I would like to commend Cody Jacobson, I think he's done a great job this past year and now starting his second year, we don't usually have school board reps who stay through the summer, so I thought that was very commendable of him to show up for our board meetings this summer, thank you.
Any other accommodations? Moving on, excuse me.
I have, but I think I'm the only pep parent on the board, so I feel like I just have to commend the pep program, pep started this week, as some of you may know, and my daughter's in it for the second year, it's an amazing program, the teachers do such a great job, and my son went through the program in, in first grade, and I think he's been really successful because of it, so thank you to the Stratford Learning Center for a great program, and the high school for having us.
Yes?
I'd like to commend our guidance program, I know personally, my son's guidance counselor worked diligently with him until the school year ended last year, and worked with him through the summer, as did other guidance officers, getting kids ready for their college applications, we don't see what they do, it's quiet, but it's work that has to continue in order for these kids to get all those applications in, so I'd like to commend the guidance department.
Anything else? Okay, moving on, approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes, first one is a joint meeting that we had on the 27th with the advisory budget committee, any major changes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the advisory budget committee and school board on July 27th, 2011.
Second. Any changes, yes?
On the joint minutes on, under discussion, the fourth sentence down, it says, Anne Wright noted that discussion on April 4th, 6th, question mark, question mark, that should just read the 13th. I do have comments on the other two, if one people are done this month.
Okay. Any other changes on July 27th minutes? All those in favor? Next minute is going to be the August 17th, 2011, board meeting, need a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting on August 17th, 2011.
Second by Anne Wright? Okay, Anne?
On page six, under revised committee assignments, the communications committee should include Megan Sunball. And then on page 11, under number D, I think these budget goal, I think things are interspersed here, mixed up, it says proposed budget goals, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, to develop the school budget within school board policies that address the education, that whole thing, all the way up to Anne Wright, should be moved down to where Krista Butts moved to approve, that was the one that actually passed. And then the one that says to develop a school budget within the school board policies, that one should be that Anne Wright moved to accept where there was no second, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, does that make sense to fellow board members? Okay.
Thank you.
We've talked a little bit about that.
Anything else? Yes?
I have a change on page seven, the fourth paragraph down, the operations committee, I think just to be clear, we should probably say the operations committee will continue and add in focusing only on the audit function, because the operations committee is, is no longer doing the other responsibilities. Thank you.
You have Michelle Morton.
Page two.
I'm sorry, excuse me, is it page two?
Okay.
And this is, we don't have to make any changes, I just want to make note that I, she's my neighbor and I was driving by her house and I noticed a balloon on her mailbox that said, "It's a boy," so I'd like to offer her and her husband, heartiest congratulations, I just happened to see her name.
Any of those in favor of accepting the minutes of the 2017? One extension from not being there. Okay, moving on, the manifest, I guess, has been signed.
Mm-hmm, it still hasn't.
Superintendent's report.
I guess tonight commences a very important role for the school board, you'll be interviewing one of three firms that have been selected to present for your superintendent search, and I believe that having heard the presentations, you'll have a very good idea of what is entailed with the advertising. with the advertising, with the soliciting of information from the public, from the staff, and actually from yourselves. And also the important role that a firm that you select can play in helping you make the correct decision so that both that individual and you are successful. And so what this is about is really finding the correct match for your community and for this board. And so tonight, to start the interview process, is a gentleman by the name of Al Argenziano from Massachusetts and he's representing HYA Associates. So, Al?
Does everyone have one? There were, there were eight packets, seven members? Thank you. Thank you for allowing Hazard Young and Atia the opportunity to come before you this evening. Who we are, Hazard, Young and Atia is located in Chicago, Illinois, and we do a number of searches. We've done over 800 searches in the last two decades. We pride ourselves on having a staff of spread out over the 50 states of about 120 people. I'm a retired superintendent from Massachusetts. My last job was in Somerville, which is two miles outside of Boston. I was superintendent from 1993 to 2005, retired in 2005, and have been doing different things with Endicott College. I ran their overseas programs because I worked for Department of State for the decade of the 80s running American schools in Spanish-speaking countries. So I've done a number of things since I retired, but I pride myself on this particular company. And I do New England. And there are a couple of other people, one of our associates, Dr. Steve Jenkins, accompanied me tonight to Durham. But we, we pride ourselves on making it a marriage between the school committee and the new superintendent. A number of firms, and I study this, you can take any one of the other firms and they have a stable of 10 to 15 people. And the same 10 to 15 people come up, search after search after search, they're the final five, the final three, the final two, sometimes the finalists. We don't do that. We don't do that. We tailor the search to your needs. So the way we operate is that if we're chosen, I'll come back and we'll sit and we'll do a calendar. And we'll make up a calendar. And once the calendar is acceptable to the board, it's your calendar, the first thing we do is we set up focus groups. And the focus groups are chosen by you. So you would have, each school committee member will be individually interviewed, all principals, all staff will be interviewed, and you create the focus groups, Chamber of Commerce, Roto, whoever you want us to meet over a two- to three-day period. We'll come at 8:00 in the morning and leave at 10:00 at night. We'll do open forums for people who are unavailable during the day. We'll do an 8 to 10 at night. So we provide a number of opportunities for people to tell us what they're looking for. And for those who can't even make all of those meetings, we have a form that's in your packet that they can answer online. And when the information is, we ask three questions. What are the strengths of Oyster River? What are the characteristics that you see that you need assistance with? And what are you looking for on a new superintendent? So we gather all of that information from 200, 300, 400 people, and we put a leadership profile together that's usually about 12 or 15 pages. And that profile is on our website and that goes out to any interested candidate. Everybody in Oyster River will get a copy and everyone on our website will get a copy, along with the information. And we have a firm that'll analyze that data that the people emailed. So they'll be looking, what are the strengths? What are the stumbling blocks people are dealing with right now? And what are the characteristics you're looking for on a new superintendent? We'll put that all together. And from that point on, we usually, and it could be subject to change, but the way I've done it in the past, and I only do two a year. I don't want to do eight to 10, like, it's a, it's a factory. I don't do that. Last year I did Amherst Pelham, which is similar here, it was university town, and Marblehead. So Amherst Pelham was a region, four towns, Chutesbury, Leverett, you know, Amherst Pelham, so similar. And we spent October to, they selected Super Bowl Sunday at 6:00 PM, 15 minutes before kickoff, they selected their superintendent. So, and then I had Marblehead. And what we have done is I rent the Hampton Inn in Revere, only because they have 24/7 pickup at Logan Airport. And people who drive, but more importantly, can fly in, we interview over two weekends. And the people stay at the Hampton Inn, they're interviewed at the Hampton Inn, and they can go back and forth to Logan Airport. And we try to bring in people from wherever any of our associates, the 200 associates, if they think they have an outstanding candidate in New Hampshire, fine. They have an outstanding candidate in Oregon, fine. We'll interview the best candidates for this job based on what you tell us you want. So we tailor each search based on your needs and it's a marriage between you and the candidate. After we narrow that field, we interview over two weekends and we probably interview 18 or 20 people. And a number of them are driving, you know, they may be New Hampshire, Maine people, but there are some outside people. And we'll narrow that field down, that you have created a search committee. Now, some school committees, they want to be their own search committee. It's okay. Some school committees have a search committee made up of two members. In Marblehead, we had a search committee of nine. In Amherst Pelham, we had a search committee of 10. And each one, there were two members of the school committee. So there were two-member school committee, two teachers, two administrators, two community members, and that's the kind of makeup. So we would give a slate of seven, eight, nine people to the search committee and they would narrow that field to three. And those would be the three that you would publicly interview and make your selection. So that's kind of our process, the way we do things. And two things that we add that I don't think other people do, at least in my experience and being in education for 47 years, is that if we give you three candidates and you choose none of the three, I guarantee we'll do the search over free. So we'll do the search over, if you don't like any of the candidates, then we'll do the search over and provide you with a different slate of people and do it over again. And the second thing is we have a price that's in there for our search. And I told the superintendent, if, and he said, "Tell the committee that." If in fact you feel, you know, if you could just come down a little, we're willing to negotiate that. So that's kind of what we do. And I would say if, if we were selected the first week in October, I would say sometime February, March 1st, you would have a superintendent. It takes about five months to do it right. And I don't think you're in a rush. I think you have this year to do it. So that if you were in a rush, I mean, if you said, "We need a superintendent in 10 weeks," we would do that. And what Hazard, Young and Atia does, we go after sitting superintendents first. We go after people who aren't looking for a job, who are very comfortable in their job, but they're outstanding superintendents. And we try to sell them on Oyster River, based on what you tell us in the profile. That's what we sell to that first group of people. The second group of people we look at are strong assistant superintendents. The third group we look at are superintendents who have retired from another state and they're between 55 and 57. They still have seven to eight years and the fire is still in the belly, they really want to do the job. We would consider those kind of people. One of the candidates that just came across my desk in the last two weeks is a West Point grad, military educator, 52 years old, he's retired and he wants to be a superintendent. He has all the credentials, Wharton School, the Business, U Penn, West Point. He's got all the credentials and here's a fellow who's 52 years old who really wants to serve. Those are the kind of people that are out there. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd gladly answer. Yes? Through the chair. Is that all right?
Yes, it is. This is, I'm sorry.
I just didn't want to, it's up to you.
A little less formal here.
Do you have an average amount of time that seating, seated superintendents stay? Once you have placed a candidate, do you have a, is there a range of time that you just press there?
A second guarantee we have is that if our selected candidate that you choose leaves within five years, we'll do the search for you. If we're going to spend all this time and you're going to pay us to do the job and within 24 months someone leaves, that's not fair to you, it's not fair to us. So we try to find people who are going to make a five-year commitment. And if they stay one, two, three or four and, and they leave, then we'll, we'll do the search.
Any other questions? Yes?
I really like the, the fact that you would conduct focus groups for us and help really define what kind of superintendent the community is looking for. I think that's really helpful. But I'm curious, after defining the desired characteristics in these focus groups or surveys, do you help create an interview tool that helps score based on these characteristics? You do? Okay.
Yeah, we, we would provide the selection committee as well as the school committee with almost questions. We could provide what I've done in the past because in other states, it's a public record. I could easily do the one or two finalists in Marblehead. And they're two-hour interviews. The board did a two-hour interview with each of the three finalists. And they're on disk and it's a public meeting and it's a public record. So you could see that give and take rather than me tell you what question. I'm a visual learner, I like to see it on the screen and I like to see Dr. Greg Moss, who came from Green Bay, Wisconsin, two Marblehead being interviewed and the questions they asked him. The second candidate was from, from Wayland and the third candidate was from St. Paul, Minnesota, but you'd get a flavor of the questions and how the board interacts. And we have the same thing in Amherst Pelham. But anything you need, that's what I, we're a service. And I talk to people all the time and, you know, some companies give you a slate of 10 people and you never see them. I'll be here, I'll be here with the focus groups and we'll provide that information. And you'll see me in central office, you'll see me in the buildings, you'll see me with principals, because I'm trying to create a marriage between a superintendent and a school committee. And the only way I can find that out is if I know what Oyster River is and what Oyster River is looking for. And this isn't what I want, this is what you want. So if you give me a body of information, I'll try to fit the person into what you tell me. And if you don't like or not satisfied, we'll do it again. So I mean, I don't know how you can go wrong. You know, it's like a win-win for you. And the only reason I'm here, the other two are coming, I have an opportunity to go to Russia for 13 days to work with their schools that, so I, I either could come late, not come at all, and I appreciate the opportunity to come early, but that's why I'm not with the other two, is that next week I'm going to Russia for two weeks.
Yes, Krista?
I just wanted to say that the superintendent's search flow chart that you've provided in this document, as well as, I think before the meeting we got it, was very helpful.
It's in there too, yeah.
It was very helpful to me because not having been through a superintendent's search myself, it really outlined, you know, what we could expect and what we were responsible for and what you were responsible for. And so I appreciate that. And then I also noticed in the packet that you gave us that you did searches for Concord and for Salem, I think it was, in New Hampshire, is that right?
In New Hampshire, I believe we did Nashua.
Nashua and Concord.
And we did, there's another one in New Hampshire. I didn't do them, I didn't do either one.
Yeah, it was Concord.
But there are two in, in New Hampshire in your packet, I know.
So would it be okay, I mean, how did those searches go for you as compared to?
Concord and Nashua, they went very, they went well for us. In one of the cases, the superintendent had some issues with, with the school board regarding taking trips, reimbursement, and there were some issues, nothing, nothing to do with Hazard, Young and Atia. But, you know, that happens. You, you do 200 searches and, you know, hopefully 95% of them are good, but human nature, people make mistakes. So they're not all perfect. Amherst Pelham, we, we spent three blizzards in January at a Holiday Inn in Hadley, couldn't get out during the searches. And we brought in a number of people and after, I want to say probably 300 to 400 hours, they chose their interim, who was the acting superintendent. We did nationwide search and they chose their interim and that's, that's their choice, you know? And, you know, she lives there, her husband has a bike shop downtown, her kids go to school there. But, you know, we brought in some heavy hitters and that's who they chose. And in Marblehead's case, you know, the board chair told me, "If, if you can't get number one, then you're going to start over because two, three, four, five, six, seven, no. We only want one person." So it depends on who you are. And that's what they told us in Marblehead. So whatever they tell us, we do.
Do you think the applicant pool that you got for your New Hampshire searches was as equally based and as large as the applicant pools that you got for your Massachusetts search?
Yeah, you, this is a quality district. This is a nice place to be, a nice place to live. This, this is, this is inviting, you know, this is an inviting place to come. And I'm, I'm sure that we will find people who, who want this type of lifestyle, this type of school district, this type of size. I mean, I listened to three principals come up here and, you know, what did the high school principal say, "By 9:00?" It was like it was April or May or October or November, by 9:00? I mean, that's enticing for people who want to run a district that has quality principal, quality teachers and wonderful kids. I mean, that's, we're in a kid business. We're not Campbell Soup, we're in the kid business. So if you have good kids and good adults leading your children, then, and young adults, so this is, yeah, I wouldn't worry at all about bringing candidates in here. And, you know, they'll, if you choose us, there's a point where, you know, we, we have to know what we're selling beside the district. We need to know what the package is, you know, that you have to tell us, salary, benefits. So we have a, a frame and we'll try to fit the photograph inside your frame. So I'm really not worried about it, really not.
Yes, Jim?
In terms of the candidates that you, that you, that you recruit, do you, what are, what are your requirements in terms of offering them a duration of contract? How long a How long a contract would you?
That's yours.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, that's your responsibility. If you ask my suggestion, I would say a minimum of three. This is your superintendent, this is your school leader, I would expect you'd want to offer a three-year contract. And regarding money, you could have openers year two and year three. You know, you don't have to put the, but that's up to you. And the seven of us will have this discussion. If we're chosen, then when you're talking parameters, you know, the two years may be okay for a principal, may be okay for a principal coming from the outside, but this is your leader. This is the person that stands up in front of your parents and your community and says, "This is our school system." So you want someone, he or she, that, you know, has something to prove. And I think, I think you have a good district, and I think you're very saleable, but you have to give me the parameters, and we'll try to fit what you need there.
Thank you.
I was interested a little bit about your recruitment to find candidates. You said that you first will go after the sitting superintendents. Can you, I'm curious about that. Will you be, sort of look at schools that you think have a superintendent with similar characteristics and approach them blindly? Or are you relying on kind of your network, so to speak, you know, of folks all over the country? I'm trying to understand how that works, because...
I would start off by sending notices out to the associations of people, of superintendents in any state. And then I would call upon the two hundred associates, which gets an email, and we've been chosen to do a search in Oyster River, size of the community, and give the parameters. Do you have any quality people who are interested in this type of job? And then we have an application process that's about ten or eleven pages, and it's the same. It's the same for no matter who applies. So you get one set of documents for five candidates, and it's the same exact information, the same exact format. So you can put them side by side, and you compare. They're not, they're not just resumes that people send us and we just make copies and send them to you. They have to do an elaborate application process. And when we're down to the three finalists, we pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for a background check for each of your three finalists. We don't just do a query, we do a total background check. Mortgage, bank accounts, credit cards. You will receive a document on each of the three finalists that has covered them completely, so you will not be blindsided by anyone who has a skeleton somewhere in a closet somewhere. So that's what we provide. You really need to do that.
I have a follow-up question about the compensation package. You said earlier that you would want to know from the board or the search, you know, what our criteria are.
Parameters.
Parameters, because I think it would vary, you know, depending on someone's experience and where they're coming from. And so I would expect that there would be some room for flexibility.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But you would have parameters, you know, you want to pay a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. You want a two hundred and five, two hundred and forty day. You want to include a, you know, what's the percent for health insurance? I know New Hampshire has Social Security, which is a benefit. What else do you do? Do you do travel? Do you do life insurance? All of those kind of benefits. If I had that information in a folder, then when people ask me, I could give them that information. But the salary range is kind of important, and, you know, that's totally up to you. You know what you can afford. And I can tell you what the market is. So, you know, somewhere in between, we'll be close.
Thank you.
And you're a region, so we're looking for people also with some regional background.
Anne? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Leon? Oh, wait a second. Oh. Thank you again.
Yes, in the interest of time, I just refer you to my superintendent's report. It's all written. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond. Just wanted to draw your attention to an additional item. Traditionally, I understand, there is usually an unofficial enrollment report that's given to the board after the council of schools. Right now, as of, I guess, nine, two, the district enrollment is two thousand eight students, which is about twenty students less than what was projected from the Long Range Planning Committee. October one is the official documentation that's reported to the state. I've had the occasion to meet with, I guess, the chair of the Long Range Planning Committee. I will be giving them the October one enrollment information, and we're going to be scheduling an opportunity for them to present to the board, I believe, in early December as to what the projections are for the next ten years.
Can I just ask a quick question about that, Lee? It appears that a large number of those twenty students might be missing from the kindergarten class at Masway. Is that enough students to staff four classes?
Could you say?
Does the kindergarten number?
What we found is that there's approximately twenty students less at Masway in kindergarten than has traditionally occurred.
Right.
And discussing with, like I said, the chair of the Long Range Committee, for some reason, it appears that the birth rate has decreased significantly over the past four or five years, and we're trying to get a better understanding of that. The kindergarten numbers are somewhat deceiving, because you do know we have a half-day kindergarten, and students do not register, many of them do not register full-time until first grade. So we understand that that's one of the variables, but we're trying, they're trying to refine their research piece to better predict what the actual birth is, because the numbers seem to be lower than what one would expect.
Is there any way for us to find out why kids aren't coming to kindergarten?
Well, we don't know if they're not coming or if they're not there.
Okay.
That's what we need to work on.
Okay.
Yes?
I would think from a budget perspective, it might be helpful to have some information prior to December. Do you think that's possible? I mean, I just, as a board member, I would be curious.
And discussing it with them, they felt they would not be prepared until probably December.
Okay.
To give you a report.
Okay.
Yes, Sam? Yes?
Would it be possible to find out, I know there are a lot, there tend to be a lot more working parents at Masway than at Moheramet, and many of them go to, my school has a full-day kindergarten program, is that not right? And also the UNH program. To find out how many of them are, if there's just a greater number going to full-day kindergarten this year, because we, there are more two parent-working families.
I think that would be some of the work for the Long Range Planning Committee.
That's what they're going to be doing.
To be looking at how they can do better projections, or whether these numbers are truly what the numbers are. There seems to be some difficulty.
So they're going to contact those places to find out?
I believe they will, but it's whether or not they're willing to give you that information too. It's a two-way thing.
Yes?
Lee, these numbers include tuition students, correct?
At the high school, yes.
Okay. Can you, do you know that number?
About thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay.
So it's forty-three now? I'm sorry?
I believe it's forty-three.
Okay, it could be forty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll wait for the Long Range Planning Committee to weigh in. Business administrators' report.
Do you want to do the business administrator? I believe...
You want to do this one, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Information on technology.
Yeah, infrastructure. And it'll be you there. Ah, Sonia.
Hi.
I didn't mean to skip you.
It's an exciting story. So my first order of business here is to include the person who's going to present this with me, John Pelker, as the district's network administrator. He is going to join me in this presentation. And just a few notes. There are probably three or four changes in here, and I've noted them, changes from what you got in your board packet. So I put them on here as notes, just to make sure you knew what was different or why it was different. And our goal is to inform about something that people generally don't think or know much about. So please ask questions and redirect us if you really would like some different information or if this is not something that, if we're going in a wrong direction for you. And I just want to define infrastructure, because some people don't really understand what infrastructure is. Infrastructure is all the devices and the cables that allow data to pass across your network. So we're talking about the real basic parts of your network, switches, routers, cabling, fiber connections, things like that. So let's get going. Oops. And let's see if we have any support. John?
Hi. As Sonia said, this is more or less a presentation based on the stuff you don't see. The back end, the stuff that makes your computer do something when you turn it on, that you hopefully want it to do. What you see up here in terms of this diagram that says "network overview" is not really a physical diagram of how the devices that run the network are connected to each other, but you might conceive of this more as being a logical diagram, just more or less how the infrastructure of the network is laid out, how it's tied together, what connects to each other to make the whole thing run. And in, to put it in a rather simplified form, if you look from about the center of that diagram towards the bottom, from the center of this pipe that says "backbone VLAN", whoops, backspace, from the center on down, that is the area of our network that you would refer to probably as the core or the heart of the network, most of which is housed here in Durham, primarily at the service building. And we'll talk to that a little bit more detail in some of the coming up slides. But you're going to hear a lot of acronyms thrown around. I'm not going to try, I'm going to try to limit that to a certain degree, so it doesn't get too techie on you. But just to give you a little bit of the feel of what's going on, a lot of those pipes that you see up there are labeled VLAN, which is a term that means a virtual LAN. We use that a lot. It's a basic component in our network for purposes of segregating network traffic in order to contain broadcast traffic, so it doesn't go everywhere, and also for reasons of security and confidentiality, keeping certain traffic where it belongs, as opposed to letting it get out everywhere across the district. That's what the virtual LAN concept is all about. Most of these are tied together. Our core network switching and routing infrastructure is primarily made up of Cisco products, from our core switch, which resides in the service building over here, where's my mouse, right here, to our ASA 5520, which is our firewall device, our major stopgap against the bad stuff coming in from the outside. We also, within this service building structure, house the two wireless LAN controller devices which run our wireless network here at the Durham campus only. And that encompasses all the buildings here in Durham, the high school, middle school, SAU and service building. Those are controlled there. And along with that, down over here, is a standalone Cisco 4402 wireless LAN controller, which handles the guest wireless network, which is an entirely different animal in terms of the amount of access that that permits a user. We didn't see it coming a few years ago. The proliferation of devices like iPads, iPhones, Androids, other types of personally carried handheld devices, which, as you know, are simply everywhere. And so the idea behind that guest network was to allow users who do not have district-issued equipment to have some access. And that's what that guest network is all about, without getting into a whole lot of detail. In the upper half of that diagram, you'll see that there's a router that sits in the middle here that's connected by two T1 lines out to our elementary schools, and I think we've got Moheramet on the right and Masway on the left. Those T1 lines are currently leased to us by G4 Communications, and those two elementary schools are essentially their own little networks, and they're quite similar to each other in the way they're laid out. There are some differences in the equipment in the two buildings, but the idea is similar. They each have their own firewall device, which is provided by a company called Sonic Wall that we've purchased from, and their internet access is provided through Comcast to the outside. The T1 line essentially connects back here to Durham for services like reaching the mail server, email, and things of that nature. On the outside, and we'll talk to this again in a subsequent slide, we have three internet service providers or ISPs, G4 Communications, Comcast, and our direct line over to the university. Those are handled through a device called a link balancer, which allows us to do some aggregation of those three incoming lines. That's just a quick bird's eye view, and you certainly can ask us questions about the detail on that if you like.
Can I do one, just break here? Is this kind of along the lines? I mean, that's a big overview. Are we in a good place? Do you have questions?
Could you just explain why you have three internet providers?
So we have three as both a cost-saving and a redundancy measure. We used to just have one, and that was all through UNH. But what we did was we brought, we buy less services now, or fewer, less bandwidth from UNH now, and we also get a different type of contractor, it's called an ADSL, from G4. And Comcast is free, so we just brought that in because we have the ability to take three lines into this link balancer. So we have three, both because it offers us redundancy, so we can keep more uptime, as well as we have more bandwidth, going that way. Yes?
Kind of jumping ahead, later on in your presentation, you talk about T1 connection issues. Since we're looking at, well, we were looking at that chart, could you kind of explain what those are at a very basic level?
Real basic level? A T1 line is 1.5 megabits. It's a small pipe.
She's actually asking about the issues.
Oh, the issues.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, by looking at the network, you know, is it, you're using G4, and that's a DSL head service, or I'm confused.
G4 offers us a few different services. They do provide our ADSL circuit that comes into campus, or into the Durham campus. Also, the T1s are provided by them, but they lease the actual connections or the circuits from Fairpoint. So we both changed from our previous provider to G4, and Verizon was bought out by Fairpoint. So in one of those two moves, we've had three points of downtime in the last few months, which...
Why wouldn't you go directly with Fairpoint? I'm just curious.
G4, we put out an RFP. I can't remember, do you remember if they bid on it? Fairpoint, do they? I don't believe they bid on our...
Didn't you have Fairpoint? I'm not sure.
Sorry?
I don't know that that reaches out.
But G4 is leasing a line from Fairpoint.
Yeah.
So what, I'm just curious, the issue, that is the connection issue, or the T1 issue?
The T1s failed, like they stopped working.
So they're not reliable?
In the last couple of months, we haven't been totally pleased with that.
Pretty bad.
So they come back up, and we get great service, and G4 communicates back to Fairpoint and gets them fixed, but it's still downtime, and we don't like downtime.
Yeah. Okay.
Does that explain it out?
The one's going down, yeah, I understand. That's, I mean, that's...
And we will talk to having redundancy there. That's one place that we haven't previously had redundancy, and we're working on that.
Okay.
Coming up soon.
All righty.
Any more questions?
You're going to continue, Chris?
We are, yes. Unless you don't want to.
Sorry, I just...
In the last couple of months, we haven't been totally pleased with that.
Okay.
So, they come back up, and we get great service. And G4 communicates back to Fairpoint and gets them fixed. But it's still downtime, and we don't like downtime.
Yeah.
Does that explain it out?
The one's going down. Yeah, I understand. That's... I mean, that's...
And we will talk to having redundancy there. That's one place that we haven't previously had redundancy, and we're working on that. So, coming up soon.
All righty.
Any more questions?
You're going to continue, Greg?
We are, yes. Unless you don't want to.
Sorry. I just...
Give us the hook if we need to. Again, here's some of these acronyms. The service building is the MDF. That's the main distribution frame. I mentioned that just in passing for pretty much the entire district. The main distribution frames, wide area network and local area network. The major components consist of a Cisco 6509 core switch, which basically is the connection point for the majority of the servers that make up our server farm that handle mail and files. You know, file sharing. And Sonya's done a lot of work with servers that house virtual machines, so that we can have more servers on less hardware. So, all of that is connected into the Cisco switch, which also connects the two school buildings here on campus. 10 gig... 10 gigabit lines over to the middle school. Right now, we only have one gigabit connection to the high school. There's a bit of a little bottleneck there that will come up in one of the slides on our concerns about those connections. I mentioned the wireless LAN controllers for here in the Durham campus. Those actually live inside that core switch. The fiber channel switches are there as high-speed transport devices for getting data to our network area... Our storage area network or SAN. The DMZ, if you look back here on the previous slide, the DMZ is just what you think it is, the demilitarized zone. It's the buffer area between the outside world and the inside world. And that switch houses a couple of our major servers, like the one that powers the Moodle program and our web server, where we can access things like Power School. So, that's kept sort of in the buffer zone between the inside and the outside, so that outside access is available and also inside access is available without compromising anything. Our firewall, I mentioned also, the Cisco ASA. That's our primary bulwark against the outside world. And this device down at the bottom here, ACS Radius Server. Radius is the authentication mechanism that allows a user to be recognized on a network as a valid authenticated user. It does a lookup and says, "Yes, you're allowed." And then you get full access based on your role within the organization as to what you get. If you're not from within the organization, you fail authentication. That's the whole point of that. So, that's what that's in there for. I think you're up next.
Yes, true.
Unless you all have some questions?
I just have one question. That is a significant bottleneck. And have you identified the source?
Yes.
How are you going to fix it and how much are you going to cost?
Cost? I'll leave Sonya. Essentially, what you're looking at is right down here, where we connect from the high school via a single 1-gigabit fiber connection through a Cisco 3560 switch. It's kind of a flaw in the design, the way it was originally set up. But that was done quite some time ago in the past, and it hasn't been changed. What we actually need to do is move that fiber from that switch over to another one that sits in the server room up here on the second floor and get that connected over to the high school. And again, that'll show up in the slide on concerns about the high school that Sonya's going to talk to and how we want to perhaps get another 10-gig connection in there like we have from the middle school. And what that will cost, you might have an idea. Even if I do.
And we are going to talk about it later. I don't have any quotes or budget quotes or anything like that right now. But it is something that we're putting into the budget, and we need to work on.
Is there any way to get around that, just in terms of rerouting rather than a major capital improvement? I'm just curious.
I'm looking at putting it into Fund 10, and I think you'll get... Sorry. I think you'll get presented with that budget proposal later. I'm not sure of the process. Sorry.
It's October 4th.
Sorry?
October 4th.
October 4th. So, our internet service providers or ISP, we actually talked a bit about this, and we've talked a bit about a lot of things. Oh, sorry about the repetitious nature. So, the high school, the middle school, the SAU and service buildings share three aggregated services. That's the UNH, G4 and the Comcast, for a total of 38 by... 34 by 8 megabits per second. And what that is, is 34 down, because usually when you're on the internet, you're taking information from the internet. So, 30... You want a big number down, because that's usually what you do. And the 8 is up. You're submitting something to the internet, which doesn't happen nearly as much. So, we can have a smaller number there, and that's okay. And then the elementary schools currently use Comcast, the free Comcast that you negotiate through your town Comcast negotiations. And they are 6 by 1. And again, that's... That's fine. It's enough. We don't have bottlenecks there. We're not having problems there. Want me to keep going? And then other infrastructure, just in each of our wiring closets, we have an uninterruptible power supply. It does two things for one... For us. One is that it cleans the power. When power comes in, it's choppy. You might spike. You might brown out often. And with server and switch equipment, they're a little sensitive to that. So, this gives you a nice clean sine wave going into your products. The other thing that it does is that it provides power in the case of a power outage. So, it'll be on a battery backup, basically. And then some of our larger ones that serve our servers and switches... Bigger switch areas. Those will also, at a certain time, and we can program that, tell all the servers, "Hey, we're out of power. It doesn't look like it's coming back. Shut down." So, it has a graceful shutdown as opposed to a crash. So, that's the uninterruptible power supply. We have a backup generator here at the high school, and it does power our main closet here, which has the servers that we have here, backup devices and servers. It doesn't do all of our closets, and that's okay. Most of our switch equipment is pretty tough. It can crash out like that pretty well, although John probably hates me saying that. And we are working on the backup generator at the service building. And in fact, it is there on its cement pad, so it's getting closer. And we also have air conditioning in most of our main wiring closets. And I'll mention later, one of our main wiring closets that we don't have air conditioning. That is a concern. Questions? So, concerns for the overview or the big picture here. One is that we have no redundancy for our core switch. That 6509 that John was talking about, it's it. If it goes down... And there is redundancy within the 6509. So, I'm not saying like we're really concerned or we're scared of this. It has dual power supplies. It has dual soups. The supervisor engine, which is basically the brains for it. There's a lot of redundancy in there, but should that go down, we have four-hour support on it as well that we keep current. But that's... You know, it's a rebuild should we lose that. Yes?
Do other districts have duplicity here?
I have not asked that question. I don't know the answer. We could ask some other similar districts and see what they do.
Let me ask. Where is that core switch? Is it in the service building?
It is. If we go back here.
Is that where...
It is. This is right here. It doesn't look like much, but it's a lot.
Yeah. Okay.
And if you don't mind, I'm just going to write that question down.
So, that building lost power?
Well, for every time we lose power, the network is just down. And that's why we're very happy about... So, right now, when the power goes off, we have seven minutes of uptime, and then our servers start to shut down. And we have a total of 17 minutes of uptime on our UPS, which isn't a lot, but seeing as we have no backup on the air conditioning, we actually want everything to shut down in that period of time. Because if it stays up, we'll just overheat everything, and then it'll be a really ungraceful shutdown.
How many times did we have to use that?
How many times have we lost power? Count floods.
It's been less in the past year than it had been in previous years. The first couple of years I was here, if the wind got above 5 miles an hour, and we lost it.
So, I don't have a number, but...
It's been better.
Yeah. At least three or four times in the three years I've been here. Yeah, we've... Every major power storm where we lose power in Durham, we're down. Okay. So, let's talk about ORHS, a high school. And so, what I do in each of these slides is try to give you kind of an overview of the building. So, we'll go through each of the buildings at this point. The cabling, we estimate it was 2006. I was in here. John was in here. We're not really all that sure. We think it happened with the building reconstruction, the renovation. But the media is Cat 6, which is very good. Cat 6 is... There is a Cat 7. And as numbers go, bigger is better in general. But Cat 5 is also adequate for what we do. So, this is very good, Cat 6. We have approximately 800 node switches. And that is... Every node is a drop or a hole in the wall that we plug into. And that is, you know, scattered throughout the building. Most of the classrooms have... It's somewhere like around eight or so on average ports in each classroom, which is kind of slim. If you're looking for one-to-one, eight children in a classroom is really low. We don't do that. So, we can't really get a good one-to-one environment. We really rely more on wireless for a one-to-one environment.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yes.
Do we still rely on hard wiring? Are we going wireless?
We are going wireless quite a bit, but you still see that... There are some areas like computer labs. You just want them to be a desktop, because you can buy more power in a desktop for less money than you can on a laptop. Desktops break down less. There's a lot more movable parts in these. You know, even the hinges, they wear with the kind of use that we get. We have many keys missing at times. So, you know, just think... Yeah. Movable objects can be interesting. So, approximately 800 nodes at the high school. John was describing our main document... No. Main distribution frame. I keep saying document. Where our core switch is here, we have a 4510 as our core switch. A little bit smaller than what we have in the service building, but adequate for this building. We have four IDS, which are intermediary distribution frames. So, everything on those four IDS come into the MDFs. And that just gives us the ability to not stretch over 300 feet, which is the length... The maximum length that you can have for the Cat 6. As we were talking about a little bit, we only have... We have a single gigabit fiber connection back to the service building. And our wireless solution is Cisco Thin Client with controllers. Questions? Yeah.
I know Cisco is a very, very good product. It's also a very expensive product, I think. Are you guys locked into using and maintaining Cisco products? Or are you trying to look outside for a different brand?
At this point, and it comes up later, so thanks for the preview. At this point, we're not looking at replacing our infrastructure. It's a great infrastructure. It works awesome. It's given us the flexibility, functionality that we need. As we buy more product, we do look at some other brands. We're not locked in, per se. We are locked into having things play well with Cisco, because that's the majority of our network. And most things are. Most things are pretty standardized at this point.
Go ahead.
I have kind of overarching question about storage, media storage. And, you know, I'm sure every year, you're seeing more and more need for greater storage. And I know that's almost like a totally different network topology. And that I'm not sure if you're going to touch upon how we're storing all the work, you know, especially as our students develop these digital portfolios that get more elaborate. They could be very large in size, I would imagine. And so, I was curious about that.
You are correct. It's not really part of infrastructure. I'm happy to talk about it if you'd like to. So, I'm looking...
But that's like a separate topology.
Should we wait till the budget season?
Yeah, that's fine. But I think that's very important, because that's...
Yep. It is. And we... I do spend a lot of time on that. And in fact, that's more of what I spend my time on. This is John's land of networking, more than mine. So, I'm more the server storage person.
Okay. Thank you.
So, sure.
That would be helpful.
Yes.
The cost of maintenance for this equipment, is it pretty stable?
Did you ask if it's stable?
Yes. I know it's year in, year out, the same cost.
Similar. There are things that we... You know, if they're costing us a lot of money, we try to work them out of the structure, just like we got three ISP services to reduce our costs while increasing our bandwidth. But yeah, it's pretty stable as far as, you know, we have one person who is the primary person maintaining the network. We buy our yearly contracts, and they've been pretty stable in pricing. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
The yearly contract we have with Cisco.
Yep.
How much is that a...
About $45,000.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
That's it?
Okay. So, some concerns, and again, we've talked a bit about them. No redundancy on that fiber connection to the service building core. And I am... I have put into the budget, and if it stays there, great. I've also put in in other years, and it's come out, so hoping that it stays in, is to buy all the equipment and get the fiber service to come in... To be moved from its current termination point at the... One of the IDFs and bring it into that MDF. So, running fiber, that means we just need to hire someone to move that fiber, polish it and plug us in. And that's the first two issues up there. And then a third is that not all the nodes in the classrooms are patched. So, sometimes we'll plug in and no service. So, what we're doing, and we also talk about this a little bit later, is we're buying more switches that we can plug in on the edge as opposed to a core switch. We have switches on the edge and trying to get all those nodes patched in.
Okay. At the middle school, I actually was here for that cabling plant rewire. It was the first summer I was here. We did middle school and Masway in one summer and re-cabled all those buildings. And if you don't think that the wire that the network runs on is important, I will tell you that it is. It's extremely important. It's only as good as the physical media. And the rewiring that we did in those buildings paid benefits immediately in terms of better access and better connections overall for the user community. Again, approximately 500 switch interfaces for users to connect to. It's a little bit different setup in the middle school, because it's a different building, and it's laid out differently. But what we did over there was where we have one core switch up there in the main hallway, what we did was we took older core switches that had been previously used and then moved those off into the IDFs once we had a new core switch to install in the main distribution frame. So, we've got a Cisco 4510 there. And in the two, actually the two IDFs in the... In the middle school, not three, that contain Cisco 4000 chassis that have been previously used and more or less just redeployed into a new role, so that we're able to connect in each of the two wings and tie that backup into the main office. Again, our connection over to the service building core switch from the middle school is actually a 10-gigabit... Two... Actually, two 10-gigabit links. That's rather something in this day and age to have that. I've had consultants that we work with come in and say, "Wow, you got 10-gigabit, and you're actually using it?" Yeah, we are. And we'd like to be using it more to get from the high school over as well. We do have the capability of doing that at the high school. We do not have the equipment at this point that would allow us to do that. So, that's something we're looking into as well. Sonya mentioned this briefly, the limited number of connections in classrooms. When you wire a building, you can't really haul cable that's going to allow you to have 30 network drops in the room. You put in eight or 10 or something like that. And then we more and more and more wind up relying on the wireless infrastructure to connect students. And this is why in the middle school, they use laptops or netbook computers that are on mobile carts that can go around from room to room. on, uh, mobile carts that can go around from room to room. And so it puts, uh, a lot more reliance upon the wireless network than, than ever before. So, uh, one of the things that we've, we've implemented over the last couple of years, it was kind of something that Sonya came up with, was the, the idea of the thin client, uh, connection, which is a workstation that isn't a full-blown computer. It's, it's, it's just a kind of a, not quite dumb terminal, but, but much smaller and lighter and, and less, and, and it uses a wired connection. And in doing that, we've introduced some smaller workgroup switches into some of the classrooms here at the middle school, um, so that they have wired connections and have, uh, gigabit connections to, uh, the core switch, which gives you a little bit of an uplift from the fifty-four meg that you would get over a wireless connection. And wireless, of course, being a shared media, uh, you don't even get that. Uh, the maximum theoretical, you know, bandwidth that you get is fifty-four megs, but you're never going to get that in a shared environment. You put them on a little course or a little workgroup switch, uh, and a thin client, they get in a gig. Um, so it's, uh, quite a bit of an uplift for them in terms of performance.
All right. We're getting the pseudo hook because we got to, uh, we're, we're, we're talking a lot. We love talking about this. We can talk more if you'd like. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to try to breeze through Masway and Mohairat. They are very similar environments. Um, if you want me to slow down, please tell me, but I, I have been asked to kind of, um, move this along a bit. Um, so we're looking at CAT six media in a, a couple of years ago, just like the, uh, middle school, approximately four hundred nodes, much smaller school environment, so we do expect fewer nodes. Um, the closets, we just have two IDFs in a central closet at Mast Way. They are also connected with that one gigabit fiber, which is fantastic. Um, we have two connections going to both Mast Way and Mohairat right now. We talked about those T ones. They're pricey, they're small bandwidth. Uh, what John has put together is called a point-to-point VPN. It uses our Comcast service to go out to the cloud and that back into our service building. It offers us more bandwidth, um, but it also is something new that we're testing. We're not ready to cut the cord on that T one until we have consistent, um, good uplink on that. Um, and we have seen it, and, um, the ports fade out here and there and we just, we can't have that. So we're really testing that and seeing if we can make that a viable solution, an alternative to the T ones. Um, and at the elementary schools, both of them, we have Maru thin client, um, and controller setups for our wireless, which was a donation by, um, someone in town. Um, and, um, I talk about that in here. Uh, we do at Mast Way have some gaps in wireless coverage. It's an odd building to try to cover, uh, for one. Um, and I put the, the donated wireless under concerns, um, because we have had some problems in that it, it was donated, it didn't come fresh from the factory. We've had firmware issues. We've had several returns that we've had to do. It's taken us longer to get this into production than we'd really like for it to be. Uh, regardless, Maru is a very good company, a very good product. Uh, we, we are going to continue to try to make that work. It's just been more of a struggle than, say, we had taken something that we already knew, which is that Cisco environment and, um, brought that over. But Jim, you asked about other products and we are trying to work with other products. Um, so we talked about that T one and the T one connection issues. Do you mind if I just flip through? Happy that I flipped through? Um, Mohairat is very similar. Um, I won't go through all of these. One of the bigger differences is they just have two closets and, but a similar number of nodes. And that's just because of the, the layout of the building makes it, made it easier, easier for us to have fewer, um, closets. And on the Mohairat issues, um, same ones for the first three. And one of the big issues at Mohairat is that there's no AC in the, um, server closet. Um, and we'd really like to see that happen. And, and I know that that's been on, but there's been bigger issues for the, the CIP. Um, but it would be, um, a good thing. We've gone in there and had it be very toasty. And one of the things that it does, it doesn't fail, the products don't fail, but you will see that your product lifespan gets shortened by a warm room. Um, at the SAU building, uh, we are, we, we really don't know when it was rewired. Um, it's CAT five, which is acceptable, does a fine job. Um, I do point that out as one of my concerns on the next page, and that's because it is, um, not the best run, um, cabling that, that could be. Punch downs, uh, are not that great. They've been moved in the wall, which causes some flaky connections. Um, it's not impossible, it works, uh, but it's just a concern. Um, but about fifty nodes in that building, uh, we just have a catalyst, um, switch in there. It's just like one small switch, it's a small building. Uh, we bring that one gigabyte fiber across to the service building to get into the core, and that's fine. It's not redundant, which would be ideal. Uh, we like redundancy, but for the number of users over there, it's, it's not a huge concern. Um, and then they also use the Cisco Thin Client. Yes.
I'm sorry, did you say, when you're talking about the SAU building, you're also talking about the service building?
No, I was just talking about the SAU.
Okay.
And I am talking fast, so they, we're good. Um, and we went over the concerns. Recent efforts, um, so John put in, um, a browser-based VPN to replace Citrix. We had Citrix when I got here. Um, and that browser-based VPN, um, allows us to still remote into the, to the environment like we're sitting inside the environment. Um, but it, we don't have to pay those Citrix licensing, which are thirty, about thirty-five hundred dollars a year. And that's complete. We've been working with it for a year or two, something like that. Um, the aggregation of those three internet service providers that we've talked about a few times, um, saved us about eighty-six forty a year while increasing our bandwidth to campus, which is nice. Um, Jim, you asked about different brands. We are actually testing different brands of switches on the edge. Um, right now that we've, we're looking at some Interisus switches and some HP switches that we've put in and just trying to see how nicely they play. Can we do everything we need to? There's different technologies that we use, like QoS and, um, the, the VLANs. Uh, John can speak much better to this than I can. Um, would you like him to speak to what we're looking for? Just keep going. Okay, so, um, so we are testing different brands. Um, we are, where I talked about those point-to-point VPNs going to the elementary schools. It's a cost, potential, a potential cost savings of twelve thousand per year. And that's by not buying the T ones. There is going to be a cost increase because we will have a, a slight charge to buy a better service of Comcast. Because right now we're using free Comcast on our pilot of this. There, it won't be a really a twelve thousand, that's kind of my mistake up there. Um, and we are also looking in the future to implement Windows, um, NPS. It's, um, the Radius, remember, John talked about Radius ACS. Windows, Microsoft calls it NPS. Um, and I can't tell you what the acronym stands for. Um, and we're, we're looking to replace that. And that would both save us money on the warranty support and from buying another product because we would be looking at replacing that appliance. Questions? Sorry.
I just want to, thank you, but this was, you know, this was a good overview. I think it helps us understand better, so when we go into budget season, understand the infrastructure. I, I do think the, the storage piece is, is very important.
Yep.
And, um, you know, having us have a better idea, because I think that is going to be an increasing cost.
Yes.
You know, over time because of the nature of how we're using more and more of this digital media. So, um, I don't know at what point, if it would be during the budget process, but we do need, I think, to talk about that to a certain level. We don't have to get into the whole nitty-gritty, but I think it would be, I think it's important that we have that information. So, but thank you.
Sure, and I'd be happy to do that. And I did cheat with one more slide, um, that I forgot. And it really is an important slide that after budget season's over for you, that I think that this is something that you probably want to talk about, is, we're looking down six to eight years. Um, you, you spent over the last, two, the two years before I started here, which is four and five years ago, um, you spent somewhere like eight to nine hundred thousand dollars in tip money, um, to forklift the infrastructure and build what we just talked about. Um, in six to eight years, that's ten to twelve years old. So that's when you're looking at, at replacing that and starting to see what you're going to do with it. And we should plan that and start planning now because that's, that's a lot of money to spend. We can do it differently, we can do it more cost-effectively, if that's what you're looking for, but it should be planned, you know, make sure that we think about those things.
Yes, Anne.
Uh, Sue Caswell will be speaking later about a facilities report, uh, facilities analysis that we'll be conducting this fall.
Okay.
Um, and I imagine that some of that, uh, the facilities work in your spaces and the rerouting of cables, that, that, there's some interplay there that.
Okay.
I think will be while for you.
No, no, I just could comment that that's not in the RFP.
No, it's not. I thought I was going to, uh, show you.
All right, and I, I didn't cheat anymore, that's the end. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have more questions, please feel free to ask.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah. Sue.
Do you have any questions?
Yep, no. The, um, Business Administration Report.
Do you have any questions on what I provided you in your packet? I just gave you an update of a number of things and if there's no questions.
You mean that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, it said the manifest are being reviewed at the office before each meeting. At some point, maybe we should talk about having a manifest committee or something. I, I, I don't really know what best practices are for that, but, um, we should definitely set that as a board. What would make sense?
Cut a point, two, two people to review it. You making a motion to do that?
We could discuss it and put it on the agenda.
Okay, we will. Yeah.
Okay.
Any else? Action item.
We'll do that when we get to that. I can discuss that when we talk.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep.
Say it again.
I was just saying, when we get to the action item, I can discuss that.
Point of order, just a moment, please. I, I would ask anybody, everyone, to please indulge me because I'm having a lot of trouble hearing everyone. And if you could all just speak up, thank you for agreeing with me. Is that that I was the only one going deaf here at the table? So if we could all speak up a little bit, and I know when I'm loud, but.
Is that good?
Okay, thank you.
Wait, so, don't we need to, um, accrue an additional fund of eleven thousand nine hundred to the low bid to cover the study?
Uh, it's.
Under action items?
It's under action items.
It's under action items.
It's under action items. Do you want to wait until we get to that?
Oh, that's later on.
Yeah.
Okay, that's for later on. I'm sorry.
Same question I asked.
Thank you.
I have a question, what, just one more question. Um, and Lee, maybe you can answer this. Um, there's an update on the final fund balance, um, of about one point seven million dollars. When will we get a detailed report of where the numbers came from? Is that part of the, one of our budget sessions? I'm just curious as to.
Of what that balance is?
Right.
I can do that.
Okay.
You'll get the full report to sign at your next meeting.
Okay.
With the detail.
Okay. With what came from GMR and, okay.
All right.
What, that's an MS report, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, MS and a DOE, yep.
Okay. I just have a good question. Do we know from the state as to whether or not we're going to have, um, that shortfall to?
We'll have a slight shortfall, but it won't be.
We don't know what the number is yet.
Um, yeah, it was somewhere around, I'd have to look through, one twenty, one twenty-five.
That's it?
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, can I ask you one question? Um, I didn't mean to make you work. Um, the facility study.
Yes.
Now, we had a facility study that was done five years ago, I believe.
Hmm, I think it was more than that, but there was one done.
Okay. Um, is there any way that we can get an idea of what that facility study recommended? What those recommend, uh, specifically what those recommendations were? How they were addressed? What has been addressed and what has not been addressed prior to getting involved with a new one? I think that might be a good place to start from.
I can send you a copy of that. I think I haven't.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Can do that.
Next. Curriculum instruction area, Danielle. Who's Danielle?
My new partner, Phyllis, is coming up with us too. We thought we'd, uh, give her a little orientation because she's been here for, what, eight days now? So I'm like, you can present to the board? Come on! So, um, as you can see.
District initiatives.
Right, district initiatives. Um, in your packet, you have a list of district initiatives. And I just wanted to give you a little background on this, um, because a lot of you are new and a lot of administrators are new to this. But, um, three years ago, we met as a leadership team at a summer leadership retreat and we identified four initiatives. And those were data use and analysis, communication, raising proficiency levels of individual learners, and, um, continuing to refine curriculum instructional practices. So with those initiatives in mind, we came up with three-year goals. And those three-year goals would end this June, two thousand twelve. So each year in the summer, leadership team meets, we report on our goals and our activities, and we plan new objectives and activities for the next year. So again, this year, we have done that. Um, so you can see in more detail the list of activities that were completed by school on, um, the website. If you go to, uh, District Information and then go to District Initiatives, you'll see a list of those. So you'll see the beginning stages. The three-year goals have remained consistent and the reporting on objectives and activities, um, are there from two thousand nine, ten year, all the way through till now. So basically what we did, um, and Phyllis and I worked, um, with the leadership team objectives and, and we worked with Leon too, to condense this and to give you an overview of what we're working on for the objectives. And as you know, um, we are, a district in need of improvement and we have several schools in need of improvement. So we tried to take those plans too and pull this all together. Um, so we're rowing one ship straight forward. Um, so that's, that's our pull together. So we'd like you to start with, um, communication. So that's, that's what you see up here, but I'm not sure if your packet, uh, starts with communication or not. But in the area of communication, um, we continue to update the website, um, with important reports and information. And, uh, we've added a column for oversight in which administrator is responsible for those activities. So, um, I would be the point person on that, so that's what you see there. And then we also talked, um, at the summer retreat about, um, providing snapshots of curriculum and instruction practices across the district so that you're not, um, maybe hearing from us all the time, um, each month at a board meeting, but you'll be able to go to the website and see, um, snapshots on the web of, uh, things that are going on in the areas of curriculum and instruction. And then we also talked about principals writing, um, good news reports every two weeks. So each building administrator, um, will be pulling that together. So those are our broad objectives, um, under the area of communication for this year. Next is, um, we want to talk about raising proficiency of individual learners.
So when we look at the three-year goals that are set in place, um, by June two thousand twelve, ninety-five percent of the students will need or exceed NECAP proficiency standards and that a response to intervention model will be fully implemented in all schools. And, um, we'll expand student accessibility to technology by fifty percent. So we're going to look at those first two areas over in the right-hand column, uh, implementation of an effective RTI process. So, uh, we're hoping by the end of this year, we have a solid, um, solid footing on, um, this process that, first of all, tier-one curriculum will be aligned with common core state standards. The state has adopted the common core frameworks. And so it's a transition process that has to be followed. By two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, there will be no NECAP. Follow NECAP will only be for the next three years. So we're in a transition process trying to align our curriculum with the common core curriculum. So that's a process and it will take, you know, the two to three years to, um, move through that process. Um, coordination of support services for students because we want to maximize student achievement for all students. That is the whole point of having an RTI model. It's rooted in special education legislation, but we are talking about maximizing achievement for all students. And so we're taking, you know, most districts in the country are taking a slightly different bent in, um, from the genesis of it. And we're looking at maximizing student achievement for all, all students. So, um, part of that is coordination of support services for students. And, um, if, I, I put this in there, you know, talking with a, a district-level team that we hope by January, the coordination of support services for elementary and middle school, um, students who are receiving any kind of additional support, um, to be academically successful, uh, will be coordinated. And by that I mean, uh, being able to pull all the resources that we have in each school and make sure that we're not, um, redundant or working in silos, but that we're coordinating that we hope by January, the coordination of support services for elementary and middle school students who are receiving any kind of additional support to be academically successful will be coordinated. And by that, I mean being able to pull all the resources that we have in each school and make sure that we're not redundant or working in silos, but that we're coordinating all our work together. Providing opportunities for grade-level teams and content-specific teams to have opportunities to plan together, to look at data, to look at student data and determine what is it that we see in trends so that we can, you know, correct course if we're off-base. And based on data, we'll identify those students who need tier-two, tier-three intervention. The whole idea of RTI is that you're not a lifer. You are getting the instructional support you need when you need it, and then you're moving back into that tier-one core curriculum that's being taught in the classroom. And so, that is the intent. And with that goal of 95% student proficiency, what we're trying to do is schedule support that will reflect that frequency and intensity of service that students will require.
And our next goal is data use.
Yes, question?
Yeah.
It just might be easier to ask them as we go along.
Sure.
First of all, this format is great. Thank you so much for presenting it this way. I'm sure it's helpful for everyone, especially people at home. I do have a question, and I always ask this question. I'm looking under, in the first column, by June 2012, we will expand student accessibility to technology by 50%. I know there's more behind this, because when I look at this, I always wonder to what end. We're raising proficiency, you know, that's the goal here. But is it that our students are better able to use technology? Is it that the technology is going to help them learn more in different subjects? You know, I personally, and maybe this isn't possible, I'd like to see more definition of this, because as a parent, I'm not sure what it means. I know that my six-year-old can use an iPad, and I can't. So, you know, his technology usage has already surpassed mine, whether there's iPads in the school or what you provide. So, you know, I'm really interested in this. I know we're not gonna have time to talk about it today, but maybe in the budget season, or maybe if board members are interested in parents, this is a whole nother meeting. Because as a parent, I kind of struggle to understand to what end. And it'd be helpful to understand the impact on education of technology so that, you know, during budget time, we can support that.
And we have decreased the student-to-computer ratio. It went from four to one to two to one. So, we've actually met that when we talk about putting computers or equipment in the hands of students and making that accessible to them. That's what we're talking about in that goal, and that has actually been met.
Okay. So, it's from a technology perspective?
Yeah. But we can, of course, talk about the benefits of educational technology at any point.
Okay.
Yes, Jim.
Phyllis, you spoke to completing the coordination of support services by January. What is the plan for assessing whatever RTI has been put into place?
Well, there are RTI teams in place in each school. And so, my hope, you know, from the district office level, is to be able to meet with those teams and the administrators and everyone who is responsible for providing support services to students. And I put January in here because I want to make sure that if we feel that we're not on track, that we'll be able to still correct, you know, what we want. But the intent of it is to make sure that students are being provided with the services they need in a timely fashion so that they get what they need when they need it, and that we don't have redundancy of service, that we are really utilizing all the human resources that we have.
Yes, Jim.
A little bit of knowledge in the hands of a fool is a dangerous thing. My wife is a teacher and has in me her most challenging student. I'm gonna ask you some questions, and if I'm off-base, please correct me. But I'm looking over here in the third paragraph on the right, where we're talking about common planning times. Now, we've also introduced a co-teaching model in the middle school, and that's gonna require significant common planning time also, as I understand it. Now, with this expansion here, I know that this is a very elusive goal. Common planning time for any teacher, for any group of teachers, is difficult. Do you expect any issues with that? And if so, how do you plan on working around it? Because trying to get all teachers together for a common planning time is, I think, a huge challenge for you.
I think the focus here is grade-level or content-specific planning. So, at one point, and it might, regular common planning time might be on Mondays. All the second-grade teachers are together to plan. So, we're not saying each day that every, you know, every second-grade teacher is going to have a common planning block of time. So, that, we feel, we can definitely meet, that we will have time, that there's focused grade-level or department common planning time.
I'm, pardon if you're interrupting. I'm concerned primarily with your middle school, where you have teams.
Yeah.
And then...
Go ahead. Sure.
I told you I'd do that to you, Jim.
That's a great question, Jim. I mean, we already do have that common planning time in the schedule. So, with our new education model, which I like to call it, regular educators and special educators do have that common planning time every single day by team. So, for example, if I'm on the eighth-grade Odyssey team, the special educator in those four content-area teachers, as well as the exploratory or specialist teacher, art, music, tech ed, et cetera, those people have a common planning time every single day. So, that is already in the schedule at the middle school.
So, this can be incorporated into that?
Correct. Yeah. And we're fortunate to have it. Many middle schools don't for a variety of different reasons, but we have it.
Thank you.
Yes?
Sorry. I just, for my own edification, others, you talk about tier-one, tier-two, tier-three. Could you quickly define that, so we understand?
It's looking at the frequency and intensity of support students need.
Okay.
And so, tier-one is your core curriculum that's being taught in every classroom.
Okay. Thank you.
That's your tier-one. And that is what the hope of this model is, is that students, you know, who are missing some piece that makes it allowable for them to access the curriculum, they can get short-term intervention that, you know, it may be in one area. And then, it's a dynamic process that you move back toward, you know, to that, you know, regular classroom core instruction. But tier-two, it's based on how far off the mark you are in terms of, say, acquiring basic early literacy skills. If you have a child who is, you know, a year below, two years below, in second grade, and, you know, is still functioning, say, at first-grade level, you would move them through a dynamic process where you provide a certain level of intervention. And when you don't get the outcomes, you're always monitoring for outcomes. Are we getting what we want for this child? If you are not satisfied with the response to the instruction, you ramp it up. And you provide a tier-three, which is even more involved, you know, requiring more time, more intensity, but with the goal of, you know, moving that child back towards, you know, the regular classroom instruction and having that be sufficient.
Yeah. So, could that model be applied for, say, a child that was not struggling, but perhaps showing more accelerated learning in a certain area, or someone who might be...
That's different, because this really...
You wouldn't do like the converse.
No. You have other services that would be accelerated services, but this is response to intervention.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
And so, just by, you know, that whole model, it's saying that, for some reason, a child is not able to sufficiently access that main curriculum being taught.
Okay. Thank you.
So, our next goal or initiative is data use and analysis. And in order to determine what children should know and be able to do, we need, at both elementary schools, to have a common universal screening tool and a progress monitoring tool for both math and ELA. So, that's our goal, is to determine what that tool will be and get it implemented in both elementary schools, both math and English, language, arts.
And what I've done is provide just a timeline. We may not have to stick that closely to it, but the purpose of providing a timeline is to make sure that by June, when we hope we have accomplished these things, that we haven't missed some opportunities. And so, basically, it's looking at, you know, getting representatives from both elementary schools. Really, the focus is on elementary right now. And trying to review the data across the two schools and determine what our trends are, what our achievement trends are, and determine professional development that would be beneficial. And then, also, just trying to figure out by January, determining what tools would work. And then, by June, from, you know, February to June, providing teacher support so that you understand the language and literacy base to early literacy and elementary literacy assessments. You know what the results mean. You know what to do to intervene and help children. And that would have to be sort of a side-by-side process that you would work with teachers and with all, you know, the wonderful staff that we have in the schools to be able to accomplish that by June. But it's doable, and it's really about building in-house capacity.
Yes, Jim.
I'm delighted that you're working on gathering this data, especially so that you have a clear idea where you are before we switch over to the core frameworks.
Right.
I think this is really awesome. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm just curious about by June 2012, the school district will adopt a goals-based budget process. You know, I'm just curious, without a strategic plan, you know, how do we get there by June? Or is that something we'll talk about in the budget process, or this is, I know, a bigger question?
No, it's, we actually discussed that, and we decided not to build an activity or an objective about that because of that very, very thing. So...
Okay. Thank you.
But we didn't change the goal. So, the goals have been steady since, for three years.
Okay. Thanks.
The other things that we were going to do towards that goal is to develop a common data grid for all four schools. So, principals will be bringing what they collect for data right now on students, and we want to make that common so that we can have a K-12 snapshot of a child. And PowerInform, which is a product that works with PowerSchool, our new student information system, the PowerInform portion is used to help analyze that data that we have. So, we'll be developing a timeline on how we get that up and going, and we'll be able to analyze the data much better with a PowerInform. And then, our last one is continuing to refine curriculum and instructional practices. And basically, a pretty basic goal is for our transitions to common core state standards, we want to make sure that we have the common core standards in the hands of all teachers for math and ELA. And we want to obviously look at our local curriculums and analyze how those standards meet the common core.
And the vertical reference is that, say, we're looking at narrative writing for children across elementary grades. You would take that one standard, and you would follow it vertically to see what happens as you move from kindergarten to first to second, and the increasing sophistication. So, that teachers will have the opportunity to really see how that growing sophistication evolves and what it is that your classroom instruction would have to be like to accomplish that by the end of each year.
And then, we will be continuing with our differentiated instruction facilitator, who is Mike Shackelford. He's actually coming next week to meet with the Core Groups 1 and 2 that he started with last year. And we're adding two additional cohort groups this year of 30 teachers across the district. And he really focuses on that tier-one instruction. How do you, now you've got the kids, now you know what they need. This is how you provide great classroom instruction for them. So, we'll continue to do that.
Great. I have a quick question about, oh, sorry.
Yes, Rocket.
Will all the educators in our district be trained after he finishes?
They will be in three years. That was our goal last year.
So, like, one more year after this? Okay. I just wanted to know that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Student Senate.
All right. So, obviously, school started the past week or so. It's going pretty well. I think everyone's enjoying their classes. I personally have a full schedule. I like all my teachers. All my classes are awesome. I'm doing an internship in yearbook, and I got to go on the field trip where we went to Connecticut. It was great. We did like a two-day seminar. We got our cover completely done. Did a lot of work, and it was really helpful. So, I think that's gonna be good. A couple, there, like, one thing coming up. We have Spirit Week, and it's gonna be the last week of September. Every day, kids are gonna dress in completely ridiculous outfits, depending on which day it is. And then, the last day, it's Class Colors Day. And if you guys have ever been around the school on Class Colors Day, it's pretty memorable. Make sure you stop by if you wanna see something crazy, basically. Let's see. I also wanted to thank Mr. Manon and Ms. Messler for the work they had, did at our school. Obviously, Mr. Manon is still here, but Ms. Messler did a great job with athletics, everything she did. I mean, she was always extremely nice to me and always very helpful. So, I'd like to thank her. And then, I also have a statement from the Student Senate about the Revolution Energy and how they withdrew their offer that they would like me to read. So...
Say that again. I'm sorry.
It's about the Revolution Energy and how they removed their offer, and the Student Senate would like me to read it. So... And it goes, "We, as a Student Senate, are disappointed that we won't be able to work with Revolution Energy on the solar panel project. We thought it was a great opportunity to better both the environment and our school district, becoming role models for the rest of the community. We're sad to see this taken away from us and hope it will be offered again in the future." It was just a quick little thing, but personally, I also feel pretty strongly about this. I'm in environmental science this year. We've been, like, even the past couple of days, we've been learning about what it means to be a sustainable community. And part of that is actually having the community be willing to take advantage of the opportunities that we're given. And I feel that we've passed up a great opportunity just because we were bickering amongst ourselves, whether it's on the blog and person. I don't know how this came about, that they removed it, but I've heard like a little story about it. So, basically, I think we just need to calm down, listen to everyone, and make sure the democratic process actually happens instead of having them withdraw their offer. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for the Student Senate? Okay.
Schoolwood Committees. I want to report on the ABC. We have an individual that's been crucial to the ABC since its inception resigning. David Prue is gonna resign. He's gonna go to, he's gonna be taking over a VP position of Finance and Administration at Franklin and Marshall College out of Pennsylvania. So, he'll be leaving. I think he wanted to attend the meeting that's on the 12th, but he won't be able to. His duties already began down at the college in Pennsylvania. But I want to thank him for all the structural things that he's brought to the process. And I think he will be, he'll be sorely missed. And I hope we find a replacement of the same caliber. And so, the word is out that we're looking for a replacement. And somebody that is in the business world or in the college world of finance and budget. We're looking for a good replacement. So, yes, Jim?
Have you made a formal announcement that we're looking for a replacement, putting them in the...
No, I'm making it right now.
Oh, no, because you just said the word is out.
Yeah.
So, I didn't know.
No, no, no. The word is out of my mouth. But we're gonna be making a formal presentation to the public on the need for a replacement. So, any of you that are listening tonight, please consider the position, if you've got the right background. Yes?
And if someone were interested, what's the process they should follow to express their interest?
They should write an email to the superintendent, and the superintendent will pass it on to the board. And we'll go through a formal nomination after a period of probably two weeks, two and a half weeks. So, from this point, but we'll have to decide, and we'll put that out on the web. Yes?
Are we at this point entertaining people from all three towns? Or are we looking for somebody specifically from Durham to replace David?
I think we're looking for the right qualification from all three towns. Any other reports? Yes?
No, I need to just follow up on your comments about David. I know David Prue, and I've known him for many, many years. And he will be sorely missed in this community in many, many ways. He's served on, he served on the Oyster River Youth Association. He almost single-handedly took that organization from being totally in the red and brought it into the black. I don't know if it exists today if it weren't for him. He has served many, many youth in this community as a coach. And I realize the ABC will miss him, but the rest of the community will miss him perhaps more.
I would like, I would like authorization to write David a letter. Thanking him, and I'm encouraging to stay involved in the community. Thanks for doing here. So, I guess thumbs up? Thank you. Any other committees that need to be... Yes, Krista?
The Policy Committee met, and we'll talk about that later.
Anybody else? Yes?
I have a few. The Sustainability Committee continues to meet. As we know, they will be coming for us. We've now in October with a presentation to the board on initiatives that are recommended. The work of the committee is, you know, at this point, it's huge. So much work has been done. And, you know, I know that, you know, I'll just report on the committee. So, we will be meeting next week, I believe, on Tuesday to continue the work in preparation for our presentation. The Strategic Committee, really Steering Committee, met last week, and we're moving forward. Some of you may recall, we're going to have a presentation in a few minutes. So, I'll just stop there and give you an update in five minutes. There are half an hour, depending on public comment.
Any other committees? Okay, moving on. We've got a public comments. I'll remind everybody who are waiting that three-minute limit will be at head, too. And if there's comments that are, three people have the same comment, I'd like for them to limit the three, only three, no more than three. Roger Spideydel, seven, Noble Cave, Peterson Drive, Durham. At the last board meeting, the New Hampshire 2011 Schools of Excellence were discussed. Also discussed were the schools in Montgomery County, Maryland, the number-one county in the state ranked, first in the nation in education. Both the New Hampshire Schools of Excellence and the Montgomery County Schools spend $4,000 per pupil less than Oyster River. We talked about that. That would save $8 million a year here. In fact, the high school of excellence here in New Hampshire spends $6,000 per pupil That would save $12 million a year and do it with educational excellence. Doesn't that pique your interest? Get your attention? How do these schools do it? I'd be in my car tomorrow to find out. Go visit them. Find out how they do it. I was a high school football coach for ten years. I scouted other teams. When someone was doing something well, I wanted to find out how they did it. And if it seemed compatible with our system, we would blend it in to our way of doing things. My dear departed father said to me, "You don't have to be smart. You just have to know what to borrow from other people." Pop used more colorful language than that, but I'm sure you get the gist of it. Businesses shop their competitors constantly, looking for a better way to do what they do. You're in the business of education. You should look to find the best way to do what you do. And here's some food for thought. Do you know that Dover was selected as one of the hundred best places to live in the United States of America? Do you know that? They're number ninety on the list. Durham is not on the list. Do you think the high taxes here, driven by an unreasonably high school budget, have anything to do with us being left off the hundred-best list? It's something to think about. Thank you.
Stephanie Adams Lee. In February, seven months ago, during the deliberative session, voters added $15,000 to the budget for the purpose of hiring a contractor to investigate the culture of distrust and disrespect in the district leadership and the community to report, to report specific recommendations to improve the culture. Whenever these funds are discussed, the school board chair generally points out that those funds don't need to be spent the way the voters intended. This amendment was added in February to try and help solve and work on what many saw as a serious problem. Since that time, there have been additional issues which have increased the feeling of distrust. I don't think a turnover in the administration or ignoring the problem will make it go away. A consultant should be hired to work with the school board, the community, and the district employees on the problem. And I think Cody made a very good point. The problem continues. The Revolution Energy is another example of what's been happening for years.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
I actually don't have a comment. I have a question. I'm Kathy Fryerson from Durham, and it has to do with Sonia's presentation. I'm a catastrophist, so I have a very base-
What, excuse me?
Catastrophist. I worry about catastrophes. And so in talking about our infrastructure, I'm wondering, what are our security measures at the services building? Are they defined by our insurance policies? In other words, does the insurance, the insurance that we carry set the minimal limitations for how we insure that building or how we secure that building? And how does that fit into our budget decision? It just seems important to me when I think about, where is that service building and who's guarding it? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to commend Dan Wright's barber. Piggybacking Cody, I was disappointed to hear from more than one source what happened with Revolutionary Energy. The troubling part was that they stated that a significant reason for them withdrawing their name, there was no board decision, as I understand it, they withdrew from the process. Significant reason was concern of their reputation after receiving negative letters from members of the community and their knowledge of the climate in this community and the blog. Now, those things were mentioned. I think the board should endeavor to find out from Revolutionary Energy, who wrote those letters and what they wrote. It sounds to me like certain members of the community made a decision for the community that is very unfortunate and certainly is against the mission. You have a Sustainability Committee. Maybe they could find out who wrote those letters and what they wrote. The School Resource Officer, the topic came up. It'd be interesting to know how much we pay for that. I was on the board when that program was started. Has it ever been assessed in the eleven or twelve years since it started? How much is it costing? What are we getting for the money? Could we be spending that money better, a different way? I think it'd be a good thing for the board to do, to take a hard look at that program. Lastly, now, actually, I hope you talk about your plans for the social media policy that you're writing. Maybe I'll speak to that at the end, but regarding the pledge, last thing I have to say, please don't do it. You're gonna vote on that tonight. It's a divisive issue. You all know, it's a controversial issue in this community and in this country. Not everybody believes that we're a one nation under God. Not everyone believes that there's liberty and justice for all. To some of it, it feels like you're trying to cram it down our throats. And what you're gonna do is you're gonna bring a circus to the board. We don't need it. How about, you know, every meeting, if you want to have a homily, maybe have a reading from the toe fill in one meeting. Something from pain at another meeting. Recite, "Give me your poor, your tired, your weary, your poor-huddled masses, yearning to be free unless you're from Mexico." Maybe the Magna Carta. So there's other ways to do it. I really implore you to consider seriously the consequences of that action.
Mike Lane from Durham, New Hampshire. And I wanted to underline some of the things that Roger said regarding the budget. I do think it's unsustainable. And I would ask you to refocus your energy to be very good stewards of our money. Believe me, when we write those checks every December and June, it's painful. And seventy percent of those checks in Durham, and I suspect in Lee and Madbury, go right to you guys. We want you to throw our nickels around like manhole covers. And we want you to be Yankee cheap, but we want you to do the right things. I did my own right-to-know request. The last five years, the budget surplus has been $1.3 million on the average. And yet, and I know I'm a one-trick pony, every year I get up there and do this. You buy, you provide health coverage for everybody except for the food care, or the food service workers who are the least-paid employees in the district. And I, with a $1.3 million budget surplus on average, and it ranges from $600,000, $800,000 to $2.00 something, I just think that's unpardonable. We go to Starbucks, we pay a little extra for our coffee because we know those kids are getting health insurance. There's a cultural difference, I suspect. I grew up in a military family, I'm a military officer, and I'm proud, I'm a patriot, I'm an unashamed patriot. And, you know, the controversy over the Pledge of Allegiance, it's a non-issue. You guys can do it or you can't do it. People here can sit down, just like they can sit down at a UNH hockey game during the Star Spangled Banner. If this is part of a dark, hidden agenda, then why are we surrounded by Newmarket, Portsmouth, Dover, Rochester, Exeter, and Barrington where they say the Pledge of Allegiance? Your government body, it's not, it's not a problem to honor the flag and honor the country it represents before a government meeting. It's not unheard of. As I said, all those other school boards do it, and it's done all over the country, it's done in the halls of Congress. I know patriotism's not popular in academia. Academia is not America. It's a small, skewed part of it, all right? Just because we live in a university town doesn't mean everything has to be skewed. Thank you for your public service. If you want to, never mind, thank you very much.
I just want to respond. Yeah, I wrote something about Revolution Energy. It's on the blog, everyone can read it. Go ahead. And asks questions. It's not critical of what they were trying to do. The reason I wrote it is because it was all about timing. They wanted you to come back at this meeting with an answer for them. And I thought the timing was just a bit off because of the way everything was working with the Sustainability Committee and what have you with their timelines. It was a very rushed type of discussion. The other thing, coincidentally, when I went home from that night, I happened to read the AP News on my phone. And they mentioned that Evergreen Solar Company went out, filed for bankruptcy, which is in Massachusetts. Now, what's interesting about that is not that they went out of business, but it was the main company that they said they procure their solar panels from. And what's even more interesting from that, and going from what Sonia was mentioning before with making things work with Cisco and making things that are operable, Evergreen's wafers are proprietary, meaning if they go away, you can't source their wafers from anywhere else, like China or California. Coincidentally, the second company that I believe they mentioned as well also filed for bankruptcy this week. So it's a trend, I'm all for sustainability, right? We have a composter in our yard. I would love solar panels on my house. I would love the solar hot water heater. Unfortunately, I got pine trees all around me that didn't go away in the hurricane. So fortunate, I guess. But I would love that. The company I work for has a complete solar away that powers our entire infrastructure from a data center perspective. The rainwater, the wastewater from that, and my company actually waters and fertilizes all the grounds and the landscaping on the campus. So it's not that I'm not for sustainability, I'm very much for it. I'm very much for local farms, I'm very much for all that stuff that surrounds that. My whole issue with Revolution Energy was not the fact that they were offering you the program, it was the fact that the timeline was so accelerated that they wanted you to accept. So having, all I was asking for them to do is, and was just an opinion piece, was ask them to do due diligence and then get back to you with answers, which I believe were the same similar questions you guys were asking. So either my blog has undue influence that I don't know about, or there were other letters out there that were actually damaging to the company. I meant no disrespect to the company, I respect them, I respect the idea of Greenhouse and Row that they operate under in Durham, and I wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
I read in Foster's that the chairman had a health scare last week. I wish him well, and I'm sure everybody else here does.
Thank you.
On the network diagram, I saw the wireless LAN was on the wrong side of the firewall.
Speak to the mic, please. Excuse me, speak to the mic, we can't hear you.
Okay. I was worried about the wireless connection being on the wrong side of the firewall. So if you were connecting wirelessly, you wouldn't be protected by the firewall. I don't know if that's true or not, it's just what I observed in the picture. To the pledge, and I think even more to the new policy concerning religious instruction, I would urge the board to not pass these things. And this is sort of irrespective of the merits. This is, there's been a lot of controversy surrounding the board lately, and these seem just two more can of worms that don't really need to be opened, and I'm not quite sure why we're opening them now. And lastly, there was, I believe, a letter about a signature being removed from the petition. My understanding, I don't know this firsthand, but my understanding is that names like Abraham Lincoln and other silly things on that petition were just removed by the administrators of the petition to make it more valid, not less.
Thank you. Moving on. You've spoken already.
Do I get to speak again?
If I gave it to one, I have to give it to all.
As long as it's a different topic.
It's a different topic. I simply want to endorse, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
I'm Michael Lane.
Michael Lane. If it is indeed the case that we are not providing health insurance to our food service workers, I find that absolutely appalling and it's an absolutely terrible message to be sending to our students that we discriminate against employees of the district and the kinds of benefits that we give them. So I, if that is true, I support your comment. Thank you.
One more.
Hi, Ruth Sample. I live in Lee and with my husband Dean, and we have two kids at Massway. I just wanted to say, to make a comment about college professors not being patriotic. I thought that was really quite offensive and untrue. College professors are famous for their willingness to take tough stands on issues and protest things that they think are unfair. And one of the reasons why the Pledge of Allegiance isn't issue is because it has historically been so controversial. And anyone who studied it, even by typing it into Wikipedia, would know that historically it has been very controversial and the subject of much litigation, some of which just concluded in the state of New Hampshire last year. So I take this very seriously. I love my country, but I also think there should be no loyalty oaths. I think it's a bad idea. It also depends on which version of the Pledge of Allegiance you choose. Should you choose the Eisenhower pledge, you will immediately conflict with your own new policy on religious neutrality. So I don't know whether you've studied the pledge at all or the litigation surrounding the pledge. I have, because I'm a First Amendment person and I love the First Amendment, it's one of my favorite amendments. And I do think we should honor the Establishment Clause. I do think we should not coerce speech. And I think that if, whenever you're talking about things, as Mr. Ketch did in a policy meeting, like where to put the cameras when you say the pledge, I think that's a pretty good sign that you shouldn't be doing it. If you're having that kind of controversy, it's not necessary. And we still don't have an answer to the question of who came up with this idea and what the justification for it was. We have no justification for new policy. I think it's pretty standard for new policy to be introduced with a justification. So I encourage you not to do it, although I've said the Pledge of Allegiance my whole life. life, along with the Hail Mary and Our Father. But that's not the issue. This is a governmental body, and it should not be leading publicly conducted loyalty oaths of any kind. Thank you.
Denise Day, Durham. And just two comments. First of all, I found it really difficult to hear a lot of what board members were saying tonight. So again, if you could particularly, I think the way it's set up maybe is harder maybe for this side. Maybe I'll try sitting on this side next time. But if people could speak up, that would be really helpful. Secondly, regarding the superintendent search firms, I know you got a packet, and there's figures in that packet. I didn't hear them. I'm hoping that as this discussion moves forward, that we'll actually hear the amounts of money that the different search firms are proposing. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to board comments. Any board comments tonight? Yes?
I have one. I just want to, you know, we usually don't respond, but I just want to follow up on a couple of things. Regarding the money that was set aside for consultants to investigate distrust, or I'm not exactly sure of the wording, I believe that's coming up on a future agenda. And that's something that the board is going to discuss. But you know, I think there's also some personal responsibility here. And I think as board members and as members of the community, we can all help do this, whether we spend the money or not. And you know, we share the same community. Most of us, you know, see each other out and about. How about a smile when you see your favorite or least favorite board member, or for us, member of the public at Young's, or wherever, you know, we're grocery shopping. You know, we can treat each other respectfully. You know, we can try not to attack each other, especially in public. It's very hurtful to come in here and feel like you're on the hot seat for something you said or may have not meant to say. You know, we can treat each other with a little more respect. And I think we all have a responsibility to do that. And I think we all could improve. And you know, I would like to see some responsibility here. That's certainly, I think, what we all teach our kids, and we can model it here today. And I think there's something else about that, too. You know, when someone's speaking, it's really rude to be commenting in the back. And that's something we hear a lot in school board meetings. So you know, that's not helpful to any of us. And you know, hopefully, we try to keep that to a minimum as well when we hear from members of the public. You know, and finally, let's try not to assume the worst about each other. Because you know, a lot of times, it seems like when two people disagree, or two groups disagree, automatically, one side is, you know, doing something wrong, is doing something secretive, is not being honest. You know, sometimes people just disagree, and it doesn't mean that we're bad people. It means that we just disagree. And what a great community we live in, that we have a forum where we can talk about it, whether it's on a blog or in a school board meeting. So you know, I'll get off my soapbox now. But it's really upsetting to hear this time and time again. We need to take responsibility for how we treat each other as board members and as members of the public. And I think there could be a lot of improvement here. And also, I just want to give an update on Revolution Energy. You know, I have done a lot of due diligence on this, as I think have members of the Subcommittee for the Sustainability Group. We looked at this for hours. We came up with a list of questions for Revolution Energy. We submitted them to Revolution Energy. We started to involve our lawyers and engineering firm. And we were told that they were not interested in working with us this year. Well, you know, it's really important to understand the board has a role of due diligence. And I don't think the full story is out there. It seems to be now because of one letter or two letters, and I haven't even seen these letters, so I'm really curious. Revolution Energy has decided that this is too risky. But you know, the board has a role of due diligence. And I wish that anytime someone came in with a proposal, we could just write a check. But that's not our jobs. That's not what we do at home, and that's not what we do on the board. And if someone here is unclear on what's involved in due diligence, you know, I went to business school, Megan went to business school, many people on this table have a lot of experience, I'd be happy to share with them the concept. And you know, maybe the board needs to talk about that, and how we could improve it. But a lot of people did a lot of due diligence to try to make Revolution Energy happen on the board and volunteers on the Sustainability Committee. And you know, I think we need to respect that work and also respect Revolution Energy's decision without reading too much into it, that once again, this is some huge conflict and something, someone did something wrong, and someone is the enemy. You know, that's really not what happened. And if we took the time to find that out, you know, maybe we can all take a deep breath and move forward.
Any other board comments? I would like to make a comment. The cafeteria workers, they are under a contract that's up for negotiations this year. And I'm for having that group have health insurance paid for the individual worker. And I've said this before, and what we did do is we stepped up to part of the issue in the past by giving them a stipends towards health. And I think that this time, we should negotiate with them with the idea that they should have health insurance paid for. Any other comments? Yes?
Henry, were you speaking as an individual or for the board?
Speaking as an individual. Okay, moving forward. Action items, policies, first read and second read. Oh, excuse me, strategic planning committee.
All right. So luckily, I don't need 20 minutes. It's really hot in here, and I know we have a lot to do. So to update everyone, I think most people know where we are at. But Krista, Ann Wright, and I met to discuss how to move forward with the strategic plan. And as some of you, hopefully all of you, may recall, the work that was completed last year on behalf of the Strategic Committee, after many, many hours of work, was a vision statement and an educational philosophy statement. When that work was completed, it was presented to the staff to make sure that it resonated with them and to get feedback. We now have that revised document, and it has always been our plan to take that out to the community and see if it matches with what the community believes, what the community believes about our schools. So we are planning an evening on October 11th, I believe, at 6:30, and I'll have more details as we go along, to share that vision and educational philosophy, and also to gather feedback from the community and talk about moving forward. To help us plan that evening, we've contacted the original members of the Strategic Committee, and some of them have very nicely volunteered to come back into this process after 18 months of work to help us plan the evening. So we're going to have a pre-planning meeting, or a planning meeting, on September 20th at 4 o'clock in the high school conference room to plan how that evening will go. Most likely, we'll have some type of facilitator. Also, Krista and Ann and I discussed, and feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything, following that evening, we need to decide how to move forward with finalizing that vision and educational philosophy. And that's really important to honor the work of the committee. So we'll need a group to help figure out how to do that. Ideally, the feedback is going to be very positive. So we're just going to be really finalizing these documents and determining how to move forward with them. Where do we want to post them? How do we want to celebrate this? And you know, ideally, planning a celebration for the community, that this is what we share, this is what we can hopefully all agree on, and this is what's going on in our schools today. And so I'm hoping, I'm envisioning some type of celebration. I think it's time for one. But we'll need, again, the members of the original committee, or maybe new members, to come forward and help us plan what to do after that October 20th meeting. So that's where we are today. I don't, as we move forward, I'll come up with some updates and let you know what's going on. And I think that's all I have to do to get everything.
Any questions? Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving to action.
I'm sorry, Henry.
Yes?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I haven't, could you post?
Yeah.
What's been done, what's going to be presented, so people can start looking at it and digesting it?
That's a great idea. We will post that definitely under the Strategic Committee section of the website, but maybe we can talk to Lee about having some sort of link on the front page. And although we're having this evening in October, you know, hopefully we're going to provide some sort of way for people who can't make the meeting to give us their feedback, you know, whether it's email or, you know, I don't know.
The ATC posts documents in their section. We can just post documents in our section of that, too. I don't see, there won't be that many, will there?
Okay. No, it's just the one document, you know, I'll just call it vision and draft vision and educational philosophy.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, that's easy.
Okay. Moving on to action items, policy first read and second read.
Okay. Ready?
Krista, you're up.
All right. I am making a motion to delete policies GBIR, GBI slash KI, GBI and GBI. I'll get to why we have, or why I think we have some in a minute. IHA, IGD dash R, JEAA and JEAC. I'm going to do them in sections so that we can, don't have a whole list. Can I get a second first?
Second.
Thank you. With the exception of policy IHA, these policies are covered in other policies. IHA is completely obsolete. I believe it's from the 1970s. Policies, the four GBI policies, I don't exactly know why we have four GBI policies. They're all in our policy manual. They all have different dates, and they all deal with the same basic topic, but different renditions of that topic. However, we now have policy KCD and policy KHB, which encompasses all four of these policies into those two policies. Policy IGD dash R is encompassed within policy JJA. And then the truancy policies and the attendance policies, if you were to look at those policies, they're very short. And we have since redone policy JH, which is on truancy and attendance, which is quite thorough. So there's no need to keep two short policies when it's encompassed twofold in JH with way more detail. So that's why I am recommending these for deletion.
Any questions? Yes, Jim.
I just want to thank Krista for working with me to make sure these obsolete policies are really obsolete. Thank you so much for your extra help.
Yes, Jim.
On policy IHA, I don't know if that should be deleted or not. And the only reason I say that is because it does allow you to group, it keeps grouping flexible, and that allows you to do things like advanced programs, AP studies, remedial groups. And not everything is going to be heterogeneous, especially at the high school level.
Right. We do have a policy on curriculum and instruction, which I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, so can we just table that until we get a reference in here which references that policy? Is it okay?
No, because we're deleting it, so we don't need a reference to the policy.
Okay, so on the notice of deletion.
It'll go into archive, and then it'll, I can have it, I can have Wendy note on under archive.
As long as we still have the ability to do that. Okay. Objection withdrawn.
So any further discussion? All those in favor of removing these policies?
Okay. Again, I am recommending to delete policies KBB, KBCR.
Are you not going to do JBM?
I'm saving those for last.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're going to start with K?
KBC, where do I start? KBB. KBC dash R, KGD, KBCC, KBCCR, and KCR. I'm going to stop there for deletion.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so most of these policies are obsolete. Policy KGD, which is not noted here, the use of school facilities and grounds and their treatment thereof of them, is in a new policy, which isKF, which is currently KG. It's a recode toKF. And for non-policy people, we normally have to recode policies all the time because the New Hampshire School Board Association changes the code and then uses that code for something else. So we're in the process of recodingKF and to, from KG, and then changing it to match the New Hampshire School Board Association's recommendations for updating, which includes the use of school facilities and equipment upon them. So don't worry, there'll be a policy coming so that people can't trash our fields. And then...
Krista, I'm sorry, can you explain, so there is a policy coming called K?
Well, we have a policy called KG, which is used for school grounds, but it's going to be recoded toKF and expanded, and it will include this policy.
Guaranteed.
I promise. I wrote it right on there. Make sure, or Ann's going to be mad at me. And then, policy KBCC and KBCCR, we just did policy KDA, and these policies are covered within that policy. Any questions?
Any further questions? Those in favor of deleting this group?
Okay. I am making a motion to recommend the deletion of policy KMA, KMB, KL, KLD, KLC, and LA.
Second.
Policy KMA is encompassed within policy KDA. And KDA is actually on, for first read, and upon further discussion, I have something to add when we get to that policy, so stay tuned for that. Policy KMB is encompassed within policy JJA, which we no longer have booster organizations within our schools, from what I understand from our administration. So it's kind of obsolete, but it's still included within JJA should a booster organization ever arise. Again, policy KL is encompassed within KEB and also KED. The portion of the public complaints against school personnel is KEB, and public complaints regarding handicap issues in school facilities is in KED. And then, the same goes for complaints concerning school personnel, which is KLD and KLC. And then LA is just brutally old and no longer valid.
Yes, Jim.
So are you saying that KMA, relation to parent organizations, is going to be, the wording approximately, will be incorporated in a policy, the one that you told me, I can't remember.
KD, yeah.
Okay. So I will approve that to be obsolete if you do that.
Okay.
Then KL, the public complaint, which is not in KED, which is the grievance regarding handicapped people, and I don't see this in that. What is it you're saying about that? Why should that be made obsolete, or?
Bear with me for one second. It's right here. I didn't plan that out at all.
Okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't move as fast as you were talking.
It's all right. So, oh, you'll see, this is a policy that has the different, oh, no, I don't want that, different orientations. So you have to have like Superman vision to read it, but bear with me. Under this policy, it tells a party that has a grievance against the school district's facilities as related to Section 504, what the procedure is that they can file a complaint against the district to actually fix that.
Right.
So that was the portion of KED, or that was the portion of K, too many Ks, KL that was not in KEB.
But, are you going, I'm confused because they're totally different policies, right?
That's right.
So you want to, you want to make KL obsolete?
Right.
Okay. Based on the fact that we have a policy KED that's completely different? Nope. I'm missing something here. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think, as I recall, during the policy committee meeting, we looked at this, because I first started reading it, I said, well, why are we getting rid of this? But then, if you really understand what this policy, it's about parents having, I think, direct complaints related to their child's education and maybe...
It's called chain of command.
The chain of command. And I think that that's where another policy incorporates that. And that's why we...
But it's not KED.
It's KEB.
KEB.
KEB covers...
I don't remember that policy, but I know it was covered because I had the same concern.
If I pull up KEB, which I don't know where that one is up.
I couldn't find KEB on the computer.
Come on.
It was definitely... It was definitely, I know we cross-checked that because we, I had the same question.
The wording is slightly different, but the... If I do what?
Go.
Okay, let's try that. Slightly faster. Whoops. You can tell I was really all right in this infrastructure thing because I'm so good at this. Right there, see? There, see? That's why Danielle's here to help me. Thanks, Danielle. All right, so this is complaints against school personnel.
Oh, okay.
So the policy is intended to create climate in a school level. Here it's, complaints will refer to the proper school decision maker for resolution at the lowest possible level. Generally, the first step will be discuss the matter directly with the employee against the, who the complaint is registered. Then it goes to the principal, and then the superintendent, which is what it says in that policy.
I've read enough, Krista, that sounds great. Okay, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to delete?
Okay, one more for deletion. And then we're through. I recommend policy JGB and JGD for deletion.
Second.
Okay, so these policies are not encompassed within JH. And because of that, I had originally sent an email out earlier today that said that I might remove them from the slate to be deleted. But I changed my mind because they are most definitely encompassed within policy JICD, which we just did, like in May or something. JICD?
Now, which two are you going with?
JGB and JGD.
They're in JICD.
Correct. Which is all about student behavior.
So that one may not be in there. In the hard copy, it might have to go online.
Student conduct and disciplinary process. Yep, see? So it's in here.
Hit that little plus around the left to fifty-two point four, fifty-three point four. Yeah, again.
Oh, there we go. Now you can read it. So in this policy, those two policies are covered. Now, I will tell you that this policy does not cover transportation, which is the only thing in those two policies in which we're deleting that isn't covered in this policy. So if you feel like we need that particular section, then I would just say totally nothing. And we'll go back to the drawing board.
So you're saying...
Yes.
Transportation, like if you have detention and you take the bus, there's no bus to bring you home. So somebody's got to...
Well, there's the late bus.
Yeah, if you get out by the, sure. So that's the only thing that's not specifically spelled out in this policy, that is specifically spelled out in these policies.
Okay, all those in favor of, there's no more discussion, right? Okay, all those in favor of accepting those two for deletions?
Okay, I'm going to do, I'll do second reads first because that's the way this little sheet goes. So...
Can I make a statement first? I'd like to see these policies stricken from the, the computer list so I can make my copies properly. I want to use, I want to use the computer list to be the actual defined list that all of, all the approved policies.
Wendy made this as a Word document.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
If she made this as a Word document, we can do that. If it's a PDF document, only Wendy can do it.
No, it's a Word document.
It's a Word document?
No, I think what you're saying is you want to take out the website, and Wendy will do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So she goes, others just wanted this fixed.
The deleted ones?
What's that?
The ones we just deleted. Oh, yeah.
After we do the second read.
The, no, the deleted ones will come off tomorrow.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't understand what you're saying, which is why I was looking at you. All right, so second read. I'm going to recommend, oh, here's curriculum development, it's policy IGA. IMG, IJOA, IJOA dash R, IGA, JJA, JJEF, IGD, and, and that's it. For second, for approval for second read.
Second.
I skipped IMDA dash R and BEDB. I want to do those.
I have a, may I make a call?
Mm-hmm.
On IGA, I would like to add at the end of the last paragraph where it says, "The board recognizes that curriculum is not static and therefore expects that curriculum guides will be updated on a regular basis. I think it would behoove us to include ensuring alignment with standards adopted by the New Hampshire Department of Education."
Which one is it, Anne? I'm sorry.
IGA. No, curriculum development, IGA.
Oh, curriculum.
And where did you want to add it, Anne?
I want to add that, I'm looking at my version, which...
Do you mean where it is?
It's, it's further in the...
It's in the second group of policies. Starting with...
The very last, the very, just above copies of all relevant guidelines.
Okay, yep.
So continuing, "The board recognizes" with...
Oh, I see, okay.
Krista, could you read out loud what she wants to say?
Yeah, after number three, there's a sentence that starts, "The board recognizes." So that statement, she's asking for it to read, "The board recognizes that curriculum is not static and therefore expects that curriculum guides will be updated on a regular basis, ensuring alignment with standards adopted by the New Hampshire Department of Education."
Is by law we have to...
Yeah, that's cool.
Can you re, I'm sorry, can you reread that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
"The board recognizes that current curriculum is not static and therefore expects that curriculum guides will be updated on a regular basis, ensuring alignment with standards adopted by the New Hampshire Department of Education."
Okay, so that statement doesn't preclude other alter, I mean, it's just...
We just have to be in alignment, it doesn't, it's not more.
Yeah, because I think that the guide, if you really read this thing, you know, it's really a tool, I think, between, you know, the, kind of the district leadership and the teachers. And I would assume just automatically, but that's fine.
That's dangerous.
Okay. Any other changes, any other thoughts? Second to that.
I was second to an amendment.
I was in the second to Anne's amendment.
Anne just did it.
Yeah.
You did it, okay, I'm sorry, Anne.
And then Anne. Sorry, Anne, right, sorry, Anne.
We have to vote for the amendment first, don't we? All those in favor of the amendment that Anne made? Okay, now, everything that has been said to be second read, all those in favor of the second reading that we've just done?
Okay, I make a motion to adopt policy IMDA dash R and policy BEDB.
Second.
With the statement that policy IMDA dash R is a regulation policy that should have been adopted with policy IMDA, which was adopted, I believe, in October of 2010. And the reason why that policy was adopted was because it was state mandated by the New Hampshire School Board Association and the laws of, an RSA of the New Hampshire government, which was updated.
Okay, yes, Jim.
Yeah? On BEDB, we spoke about under A superintendent, so superintendent nomination. We spoke about how there may be resignations or changes in staff. So I don't know how you want to word that, superintendent nomination slash resignation for superintendent changes in staff.
What is policy? Nomination slash resignation, Lee, do you think that that would be...
Would it be non-published?
I, I, BEDB.
Aren't we on IMBA?
We're doing both at the same time. Lee, do you think that that...
I'm sorry.
Under BEDB for the preliminary action items, it's kind of your action item, so under superintendent nominations, if we put nominations...
I think it'd be fine to put actions there.
Or slash resignations?
Just actions?
Yes.
Superintendent actions?
Well, I would assume that they'd be nominations or actions.
That's right. Okay.
Yes, wait, do we have an amendment for that? Do we have an amendment or a second for that?
Sure, I'll amend it to, under A of BEDB, to say superintendent actions rather than superintendent nominations.
Okay. And second by Anne Lane. Any further discussion on that amendment? No, all those in favor of the amendment? Back to the original then. Anne, if you have something, Anne?
I just have a comment on the original motion, which is, I did ask the table this last time. Again, I know that that's not the will of the board, but I do hope that we revisit this because our board meetings do go so late, and I feel that there's something in here. Maybe we could study this and have our board meetings be more efficient and make them more workable. I think that, that, that would be good. I, I have no problem having the Pledge of Allegiance, of Allegiance at the beginning, but I think it would be helpful to have some ways so that it's not, if people choose to not participate in it, that they're not singled out. And I don't know how we can do that as a board sitting here. You know, there's not everyone wants to say the Pledge of Allegiance or participate in that, and I think we need to be respectful of that. That's something we need to respect, people's right to participate or not to participate. And how are we going to do that as a board? Has that been addressed? Did the policy committee talk about it?
The policy committee did talk about that. I don't know that there's any way to address that with the beings sitting in the room. But Jim had mentioned, which apparently someone had heard via videotape, that when we are taping school board meetings, that we have the camera focus on the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance rather than on individuals, which the committee felt was a reasonable request. And that's the what we came up with.
Yes.
I, I just came up with an idea. Is it, is it feasible to do the Pledge of Allegiance prior to calling the meeting to order? Is that, does it make sense?
I don't think it makes sense.
Well, I know in Madbury, when they do it at the town meeting, they call the meeting to order and then...
Okay. I mean, it could be at a set time, you know, six fifty-nine, I don't know.
All right.
Yes.
It's my understanding that the Pledge of Allegiance was set by the school board years ago. Perhaps it would behoove us to do some history digging and find out how it was conducted then.
Yeah, how it was that, I'm sorry?
It was, it was set by the board years ago, I'm not sure when it was, when it was dropped. But it would be interesting to know where in the agenda it was said at that time.
But personally, I don't know that we want to necessarily go to the way things were done in the past. I mean, there was also corporal punishment in the past. I mean, there's, we, we don't necessarily need to look to way, the way things were done in the past for how we need to do things in the present. We want to just have it be an inclusive, I think that's fine, having the camera focus on the flag. And I think that, that suits me, is that, I think that's, that's fine, I don't have any issue with it. It's as sensitive as we can be to people's...
You directing me, as chair of the board, to talk to the powers that be back there?
Yes.
Okay, I will. Okay, have we got a motion up your left table?
Mm-hmm.
With a second?
Are we still talking about this policy?
We are talking about both of them, so if you have something on the other one, feel free.
Item... Number three.
Mm-hmm.
The term "regular" is defined as at least once weekly at the elementary and middle schools and on special occasions and at selected events and on special occasions at the high school. I may be misreading that sentence, however, if, if it reads as I think it does.
I'm looking at...
Number three under patriotic exercises.
IMDA R.
And perhaps I'm not reading correctly, Krista? Does this mean...
No, that's what it does.
Does this mean that...
I'm just pulling up the other, the other policy because I can't tell you how many times we've had this discussion at the policy committee level. And that is why that statement is in there. Because this is the RSA. And the RSA says, that statement, this sentence is in here because of the RSA right here. And the RSA, and I'm going to wing it here because we've had it read to us a couple of times, states that the New Hampshire School Patriot Act, and I'm probably going to get this wrong and then...
I have it right here.
All right. All right. "As a continuation of the policy of teaching of our country's history to the elementary and secondary pupils of the state, this section shall be known as the New Hampshire School Patriot Act. A school district shall authorize a period of time during the school day for resuscitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Pupil participation in the resuscitation of the Pledge of Allegiance shall be voluntary. Pupils not participating in the resuscitation of the Pledge of Allegiance may silently stand or remain seated but shall be required to respect the rights of those pupils electing to participate. If this paragraph shall not be declared to be unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, the remaining paragraphs in this section shall not be affected and shall continue in full force and effect." So according to the RSA, which still stands when we wrote this policy, and as far as I know, it still stands now, I don't know. They have to say the Pledge of Allegiance every day.
They have to set a time aside.
They have to set a time aside every day to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Correct. So we put in this sentence, "There will be regular observance of the Pledge of Allegiance." And then we took down here, now I'm going to highlight the whole down thing, the RSA. Because if the RSA changes, we don't have to change our policy because it just says regular observance. We probably would have to change maybe the dash R policy, but the whole theory...
So I'm talking about the dash R.
Yeah, so now we can talk about the dash R, but I just wanted to show you where that was referencing.
Yes, Jim.
I think the confusion is that it doesn't make sense in English. The term "regular" can't refer to a selected event or a special occasion. By definition, those aren't regular. And I don't know why there's a difference between regular as defined at the elementary and middle school and why regular is defined differently at the high school.
My understanding from when we discussed this the first time around for IMDA, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason why it's difficult at the high school is because there's no homeroom or like first period. Everybody's in the same place on the same day at the same time.
What teacher's going to do it and what, yeah.
So that's why it's different at the high school as opposed to the middle school and the elementary school because at those schools, they start their day in their selected classroom.
Excuse me. Can you come up to the height?
At the high school, we have a student that leads, that reads the announcements every morning and leads the pledge every day.
Regardless of what the students have?
Regardless. Obviously, the teachers in their classrooms, you know, understand that they are not gonna force anybody to say the pledge, and you can voluntarily opt to stay seated and be respectful during that time, but it's done every day.
Yes.
The reason, yeah, I, I agree. I was, I happened to be in the high school one day and I'm with the hubbub, I said, somebody's gonna send the Pledge of Allegiance. And I asked Laura Rogers at the time, is that the Pledge of Allegiance? She says, yeah, we recite it daily. So that's what she said. And I was, personally, I was pleasantly surprised with that.
And we have continued that practice.
Okay, thanks.
So the language on three doesn't work.
The only thing I could say is that this policy was written in nineteen ninety, and the RSA is two thousand and two, so if we need to change it, then we need to change it.
Why don't we just cross out the?
Just take it out.
You could just take it out.
Yeah.
Because it's defined by the RSA, not by the policy.
Can I make a motion that on policy IMDA dash R, line three, be stricken, because it's not really necessary. It's, it's already said, it's already indicated in number one, so I don't think, I don't think it's needed there.
Any second for that motion? Second, Ann Lane. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Back to the original. Okay, the, we voted for all the changes, so the three that we're talking about are IMBA R.
And BEDB.
Yeah. All those in favor of the way it's written?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I just add one little thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. On BEDB, just there should be a period, it's like a class paragraph under all additions. Just a small thing.
All additions. Oh, got it.
I'm sorry, we're ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Okay. Thank you, guys, we're almost done. All right, so these policies are for first read, and I'm not going to do these at such a large sleep, because it's a first read. So I'm making a motion to, I'll start at the top. What the heck? Adopt for first read, or approve for first read is better. ACD and ACDR. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll introduce the motion. These policies were recommended for revision by the New Hampshire School Board Association. This policy was provided to us by our superintendent, who, right? Yes. With this, the section of this policy was taken from a policy that was provided to us by our superintendent, because in his previous post, he did some extensive work with religious neutrality in Lewiston. So we couldn't write it any better, so we just took it as words. So thank you, Lee. Saved me a lot of time and some attorney time.
Yes, Ann?
I just have some words, I think.
Yep.
In the second paragraph, second line. For the sake of high quality education, not good education, for the sake of high quality education and goodwill among people. Moving into the third paragraph. In developing guidelines about acknowledgement of religion, the Oyster River School Board bases its policy in the shared commitment of respect for individual blah, 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 blah. Okay, then the next sentence. Because we base our policy, I think it should be a policy. This means that Oyster River Cooperative Schools may neither promote nor inhibit any religious belief, including non-belief, so long as such belief systems or non-belief, no, so, I'm sorry, I've written this. So long as such belief systems or non-belief systems are consistent with school rules and respect the rights of others.
Can you read that one again, please, Ann? You're doing this means the Oyster River School Board sentence, right?
I thought I was making it less clunky, but I think I made it more clunky, so maybe I'll just, maybe just ignore that.
Okay.
Just ignore that last one. Move down to, it, it just kept saying non-belief, non-belief. As we move down, students' knowledge and appreciation of the role that religion has and does play in the social, cultural, and historical development of civilization. I think we should have and does in that.
So it's historical, so it's past tense.
Pardon?
It's historical, so it's past tense.
Well, they're talking about the role of religion, that it has a his, social, cultural, and historical, appreciate the role that religion has and does play in the social, cultural, and historical development.
Change the plays, just say that religion plays.
The present tends to talk about the past tense.
If you say plays, you're, it's fine.
And it says, in the advance of students' knowledge and appreciation of the role that religion has and does play.
Play, play.
It would be neither possible nor desirable for our schools simply to ignore religion and avoid all material with religious themes or reference.
Okay.
Well, it says both with, with religious theme or implication. I just, that's clunky. That's very clunky. With religious themes or reference.
Okay, I got it.
And then in the next paragraph, it says, within the current legal framework, our schools, the school board administrators, it lists a whole bunch of things, must make many practical decisions. Well, our schools don't make practical decisions, so I would just cut out our schools. The school board administrators, teachers, and parents do make practical decisions, so just, I would X out our schools. And that's the only changes I have on that one.
Okay.
Except on ACDR.
Yes.
I, I have a question, and I think this might be where Ann was going on, on one of your comments, and, and I'm really just asking this, because I've never seen a policy like this before, and I haven't.
Nor have I.
It's, it's, it's hard to read. The one sentence that Ann was referring to that I want to talk about is, this means that Oyster River Cooperative Schools may neither promote nor inhibit religious or non-belief. That part, so long as expressions of religious belief or non-belief are consistent with school. You know, as I'm reading this and thinking, isn't a non-belief a belief? And I don't know if that's where you were going, but it just seems a little.
That's what I was thinking, and non-belief could be argued to be a belief. But then again, I don't know whether people, whether people would be offended if you said, if you didn't spell out non-belief.
Right.
That's why I added it back.
Right, and I think this is a policy that people could read a certain way and be offended.
I know, it's like, I don't wanna go there on this religion thing.
Right, I mean, someone will be offended, but, I mean, I just almost think it might be easier, and Ann, I think this is where you're going. This means that Oyster River Coop, and I think it's important to get this right, I know this is annoying, but this, you know, we're talking about people's values, and, you know, when you talk about this, it's, it's difficult. This means that the Oyster River Cooperative Schools may neither promote nor inhibit religious or non-belief. So long as expressions of belief, can't we just say this is what people believe, they're expressions of belief?
Practice or lack of.
May I say just another thing?
I don't know.
Yes, can I change one letter in that sentence?
Sure, sure.
Where it says, this means the Oyster River Cooperative Schools may neither promote nor inhibit religion or non-belief, so long as expressions of religious belief, yada, 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 yada. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
So you're changing religious.
May neither promote nor inhibit religion or non-belief, so long as expressions of religious belief or non-belief are consistent with school rules and respect the rights of others.
Okay, I think, can we back up? I'm just saying that one word instead of religious.
Have it be religion.
Change it from an adjective to a noun.
It has to be, otherwise it's lost evidence.
Could it be? I can remember it. I'm gonna do it all at the same time. Could you just change non-belief to, could you say religion or other?
I think that's fine. It's still a clunky sentence, but I can over that.
I had a question, Krista?
Yes.
I can't remember, did we have any of the principals look at this, or anybody other than us at this point?
Maybe we should.
We can? No, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's just passing the buck. We should try to work it out. No, I was just wondering if we could get some guidance from some leadership team, from the principals, maybe, on this. I don't know. Because I would assume that when they, they're talking about, you know, religious neutrality in the classroom, they may have some jargon or some verbiage that we may not be able to think of right now, as we're.
We can.
I, I mean, that's another, it's punting a little bit, but.
Okay, so then we're, we're dealing with the being of non-being. I think you'd say that.
So we want to review this separate?
We could take it off the table if you want, and.
I think, you know, the intent, I think we're looking at, we have to look at intent. And I think we're trying to oversmith it somewhat. So if we were just to say that, you can't, you can either prohibit nor, nor, nor encourage religion, period, that says it. And then you go to religious beliefs and non-beliefs. But I think that is.
I think what's behind this policy is very good.
Yeah, that's so, I think if the intent is clear in its expression, I think we can let it go by simply changing one letter.
Perhaps we could review the separation of church and state in that language.
Well, can I just say that while Lewiston is in a different state, they're not a different country? And we had a long discussion with Lee over how this policy came to be, and I think we're all aware of the situation that he was in there, and the reason why we didn't send it out to our district was because we felt that it had been hashed out in a, in an environment in which there was serious personal vesting in this type of policy. So that's why we didn't send it. I am not opposed to sending it. I don't know that we'll get any, you know, definite feedback on it, but we can, we can see.
I recommend that we table it.
You're making a motion?
Well, I'm making a motion to table both ACD and ACDR.
Okay, and do you want them sent out?
Yes, and I would like to have sent out to teacher groups to make comments.
So staff and then?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann? All those in favor of tabling it and sending it out, okay. And also, I would like to table the rest of the policies there for the first read. Not that I want to enter your thing. I think the time dictates what we should do, because we've got a non-public meeting after this.
Can I just? Because there's a policy on here that needs to be addressed with an obsolete policy that we just deleted, can we just discuss that one policy?
Okay, which, what is it?
It's policy KDA.
Say it again, K what?
KDA. Just so, because it's fresh in my mind and I don't want to lose it. Can we please just discuss that one policy?
Second.
About a motion, Krista?
Yes, I, I am making a motion to adopt for first read, policy KDA.
Krista?
Yes.
I thought you were going to add to the part that spoke about PTO.
I am gonna do that right now, as soon as I find it. This one? No, it's in this one. All right, so Ann had brought to my attention that the policy that we just deleted, K, something, KMA, starting to lose my brain here, had some nice wording in it, which this policy does not include. So I was gonna propose, if I can find it, here it is, that we add the wording of. Yeah. Add the wording of policy KMA, which starts, the board recognizes that parent-teacher organizations are a source of, of interest in the public schools. The district looks to parent organizations as a meaning of promoting a finer educational program. By achieving better understanding among the pupils, the parents, and the teachers and administrators, this district will give every encouragement to the maintenance of an enthusiastic and industrious parent organization. Two, number three. Which starts, organize or assist in the development of speakers' bureaus and speaking engagements with civic, PTO, church, and other groups. So if you want to table it now, you can, but I just wanted to get that in.
Can I make the call up?
Yes.
Yes.
I like KMA. I mean, I know it's older, but I like what it says about supporting parent-teacher organizations. And I really like what you did with KDA. I really liked, I wrote on the top, excellent.
Thanks, I've been working on it for like six months.
I know you have, but I just want you to know that I appreciate it. But I kind of think the two don't mesh together really well. That's just my opinion, that they say different things. So you can add these words to here, but KMA is saying something very different, I think, than the public information program is. It's saying about the relationships our schools have with our parent-teacher organizations as opposed to how we disseminate information.
Yeah, the problem with this policy of KMA is that the New Hampshire School Board Association doesn't recommend anything of the sort.
Does that matter to us?
It does in that if we just issue a random policy code to it, it could conflict with a recommended policy code down the line. So, because we get all of our policy coding from the New Hampshire School Board Association, which is associated with state regulations, so.
Could we ask Barrett if there's a policy on how schools deal with?
I can do that, yeah.
With parent-teacher organizations?
Yep, I can absolutely do that.
Table it with the understanding that she'll ask the question.
Okay, but we are gonna do this policy at the next, this particular policy has to be done at the next meeting, because this policy has been brought up in the public and in the school board meeting so many times in the last three months, I can't count.
Megan?
I think we can figure out a way to fit it into KDA. It's just the location, and it might need to be like a transitional phrase or something, but I think it could be incorporated in KDA.
I actually disagree with you, I agree with you.
Okay.
Ann?
Well, Jim had his hand up.
Oh, Jim.
Move, I'd like to move this question and, and vote to table it.
Can I just say one thing first, Jim?
Yeah, I just made a motion.
I know, okay, well, we have to vote on it at three quarters, so.
Second.
Second. Jocelyn? Any discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor of?
But you wanted to have a discussion on this, Ann.
Oh, I, no, I wanted to, I thought, I thought we had to discuss his motion to.
You can right now.
Then you won't be able to talk about it.
Oh.
So it's second.
I just want to say one little thing.
Yes.
You want to table, or whatever, you want to move your question, so. I can't say my little thing now?
Yeah, it's open.
I get very confused with this, especially now it's late at night, all right? Don't confuse me anymore. I was just gonna say, I think we can make a motion and pass KDA as written. It's an excellent policy, and let's just do it in ten seconds. And then worry about KMA, Krista will ask Barrett about how we could write another policy with that information, with, working with PTOs.
Or blend them together by the next read. If she comes back with this mission.
This one doesn't, there's no rush on the PTO one, but Krista wanted this one done quickly.
I would, I withdraw, withdraw. I withdraw, withdraw the, can I withdraw it even though it has been seconded?
Yeah.
All right, then I still withdraw it.
Withdraw, seconded.
Now make another motion.
Okay, give it up. Go ahead.
Go.
I'd like to make a motion to, to pass the, what do I say, Krista? You know the words.
I approved the policy for first read. Yeah, it's already been. I already made it.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
All those in favor of the motion that's on the table? Everybody? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready to go.
Additional funds for the facility study, Sue.
They did. Oh, no, they didn't.
Yes.
Point of order. Um, I make a motion to table the policies, BBF, BCA, and RDI, IB, IHL, IKF, IKFC, IKG, JEC, JFA, BJICD dash RJC, KCD, KDCA, and KB, KHB. Till the next meeting.
I second it.
EIL.
Okay, any questions, any discussions? All those in favor of motion?
Thank you.
No, I'm voting yes.
I just sent you there. Okay, Sue.
Okay, you should have in your packet the summary of the bids for the facility study, orange. It's like a hundred degrees. As you can see, they all came in higher than the $35,000 that you appropriated out of the expendable trust fund. And the reason for that is the original request for an estimate didn't include the high school. So when we put the proposal out there, we included the high school. So first of all, I assume that you all want to include the high school. You want a complete analysis of all your facilities. So in order to do that, you need to appropriate additional funds to recommend the low bid of Davis Goodrow. And I don't know if Ann, if you want to speak to it, or Henry, we had a meeting with all of them, interviewed them, excuse me, except for the high bid.
So where are you asking that the funds be appropriated from?
Um, actually, I would recommend you take it out of your surplus for this year, because you will have a surplus this year.
You can do that up until we get the MS fund done.
Well, I'm talking about this year. You can't do it on last year's, but this current year's, because you will have a surplus this year. You have a considerable surplus from just the comings and goings of teachers from your early retirement offer, so. That would be my recommendation.
So I would make the motion that we take, we put additional funds in with the $35,000, which is already, already going to be expended for the maintenance, expended, expendable fund of $11,900, so we can include this cost of the study to include the high school. Some of those like that.
Second.
Second by Ann. All those in favor?
I have a discussion.
Discussion, excuse me.
I have to, so why was the high school not included in the RFP?
Apparently, when the request was made, it wasn't included. So when they called and said, what would it possibly cost?
Why would we not include the high school?
I'm not sure. I think at the time, the perception was that the high school was the newer building. It wasn't a need. But, of course, we expanded the study to include the option of putting together a plan for capital improvement. So at the time, I don't think that was part of the plan.
Okay. It seems like a pretty grave oversight, that's why.
Right, right. When we originally talked about it, I know we talked about Mohammed and a need for new space because we have the modulators, Massway being an older building, middle school being an older building. Obviously, we need to do something with those buildings. We were putting the offices in the high, in the middle school, so, you know, why are we doing this? Shouldn't we be doing a study of these buildings to see what, you know, our long-range plan is? And the high school was just eliminated from that conversation.
When I was approached with this, and I know it was a concern of the school committee to get this thing done, I was approached by Sue and said, well, the original estimate, when they did not include the study. So when we issued the bid, the RFP, I asked if we put it in as an option.
Okay.
So that we could take a look at comprehensively. If we're gonna do this, you need to do it, your whole capital needs to be done. And it came out with the hope that we'd have enough money to cover it. And we were $11,900 short. And so if we're gonna do this, we have to do it right, have a complete study.
Yeah, okay.
And further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded. Who seconded it? Dan did.
Ann Wright.
Ann Wright. Okay, all those in favor of spending the money? No? Okay, moving on from public comments, again. No public comments, moving on, closing action, excuse me. I'm sorry, John.
Slow at my best. John Collins Lee, also inhabit a skewed academic community nearby. I mean, really? Do we like cancer? How about oceans without fish? Let's warm up the planet, melt the ice caps. I could sell you some beachfront in Barrington. Come on. Not all patriots carry a gun. Comments like that are offensive. I'm still anxious to hear about your progress and your social media policy. I'll wait until, maybe at a future meeting. I think any effort is ill-conceived. You can't write policy to control people's actions, or certainly not to shape their attitudes. And the big problem, as pointed out at previous meeting, is that any policy with the board unwilling to act on any consequences of that policy is a meaningless policy. And I think that it, that whole brouhaha over the tweets is distracted from some other important issues that the board has that have been stewing for a while. We're still anxious to know what happened in a meeting on May 4th between the Guild and the leadership of the district at the time and a couple of board members. We still await the information on what happened at that meeting. We certainly still wait for information on the superintendent buyout. When that started, who started it? And the process by which that action took place. And the calls for civility and respect, we've, treat us with respect and you'll get the respect back. I mean, you guys have ignored the law, policy. You just blatantly disregarded. You show no concern for what the public thinks, what we care, how we care about this district, our right to know. Then you plead for civility. I mean, it's the civility of well-mannered thugs.
I have a question, Kathy Fryerson, about the religious neutrality. I lived in Waterville, Maine during those times, so I'm, and it spilled over into Waterville, so I'm very aware of what you were dealing with in Lewiston. But I'm concerned that the policies that were put forward, as a historian, I'm a little concerned about some of the assumptions and statements that are there. For example, there's some comments there that says that we simply cannot ignore in our instruction anything about the role of religion, or any literature, or works of art that have religious themes. It's inconceivable to me that the education in the Oyster River School District does not look at works of art that have religious themes. You can't read Leo Tolstoy and not be dealing with work that has religious themes. So I think there's a, we need to be very careful in thinking that there's something broken here, which I don't think is necessarily broken. So before that goes out, I think those are the kinds of statements that make this a very potentially inflammatory policy. And I think that's why it's commendable that you're going to give it to the teachers who are in the classroom and the principals, because they know what they're teaching, they know what works are there, and what they are doing and what they can do. So I'm not sure that there's a problem that needs fixing. My understanding is if you take world history, you're covering these issues. So the basic premises of the policy as proposed don't seem to align with the current curriculum and what goes on in our classrooms.
Dan Beller, McKenna Durham, and Oyster River parent. And just to augment that comment, my daughter, who now is in the high school, has gone through from kindergarten to Mohammed all the way up, certainly has covered religion at every step of the way when it's appropriate. So I share the concern that a well-intentioned policy, I don't question the motivation, could be read as imposing religion where it doesn't need to be, since we already have no prohibition of teaching religion when it's appropriate.
Okay, is there a public comments? Moving on then to agenda planning, setting, review of the future agenda. We do know that we have policies that have to be first read. So that's one thing.
And there'll be, there's gonna be more, so you'll have to work with Lee as to what you want to put on which agenda, because we have another meeting to finish, book, which is K and L, which is this big compared to J and K, which is this big. So we're through, once we get through these, we're through the bulk of it, K and L, I just.
Okay. Anything else that needs to be put on the agenda? Okay. Ann, I will pick up a few things then.
Do we have that $15,000? We have that on the agenda.
If you look at your sheet, it's on the agenda for September 21. There's a planning sheet I provided for you.
Yeah.
So you can look.
You're more organized than I am. We do have it coming up.
September 21.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Anything else? And we have future meeting dates. We have September 21st, we have the regular meeting, and then October 5th, we have another regular meeting. We have a budget workshop coming up on October 4th. And I would hope that all of that. Anything else? Okay?
Yes. I'm sorry, what time is the budget meeting? Is that?
Um, it's seven o'clock right now.
Oh, it's during, okay, it's not like during the day?
Yes, it is. It's October, on October 4th.
Oh, October 4th is full day.
It's a full day.
Yeah, that's the first reading.
If you look in your packet, you have a whole budget sheet.
Right, right, okay. Sorry for that, okay.
At the Lee safety complex.
We're gonna hold it.
I believe it's in Lee, at the.
Oh, safety complex, Lee.
Okay.
Same as last.
And it has to start at eight, that early at eight?
It's listed on your draft.
No, it says eight to four. But my concern is, many people have to get their kids on the bus and.
I guess then communicate to Sue, cause she'll pass this out, maybe this draft four times, as it's created this morning, and then.
Okay, so Sue. You talked about that? Anything else for the agenda? Dates? Okay. The meeting is adjourned.
Do we need a motion to go into non-public?
We're gonna go into non-public.
So we're not adjourned?
No, we are adjourned, we couldn't.
Are you going to non-public?
Yeah, we're going to non-public.
So do we need a motion? We need to adjourn.
Yeah, we need a motion by.
Decide the RSA.
Are you gonna go back into session?
Yeah, I guess we have. We're gonna go back into session and vote for the non-public. Krista, come here, please. We're gonna have to vote in public session. We have to vote for the non-public. Need a motion.
I made a motion to go onto non-public versus RSA something. Ninety-one A, poll in three, two, B.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Ann Lane, aye.
True catch, aye.
Krista, that's aye.
Ann Wright, aye.
Jocelyn, open, aye.
Aye, Megan Turnbull.
Henry Brackett, aye. Okay, we're in non-public.